Okay, you're live.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Good evening, Stonecrest. Welcome to the work session, City of Stonecrest, March 8th, 6:00 PM. Mountain City Click, would you call us in, please?
Councilmember Jimmy Clayton. Councilmember Rob Turner. Councilmember Jasmine Cobble.
Here.
Councilmember George Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Tammy Grimes.
Here.
And Mayor Jason Larry sent an email stating that he was not, or he sent a message saying he wasn't going to be here tonight.
Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. We will go according to the agenda and perhaps add a few items at the end of the three items that are currently on the agenda. The first item on the agenda is the two-year road paving plan. I believe Mr. Hildebrandt and Deputy City Manager Joanna is gonna be late or not gonna join us?
He will not be joining us this evening.
It's on you, sir.
Okay, if I can have the host allow me to share my screen.
Are you seeing my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, City Council. Just wanted to follow up with you on our, from our discussion at the retreat. We talked about, we talked a lot about capital projects and specifically, we spent a long time on the two-year resurfacing plan and wanted to follow up with you on that today. This, this first slide, and I think Ms. Grimes, you might not be able to see this, so I'll talk through it. This is the, this is what was the same slide that was discussed at the retreat in terms of what we project for the next two years for the SLOSS program. We have a current balance of $11.6 million in the bank. Over the next two years, we'll get an additional $15.4 million and then throw in another $1 million of LMIG. So that's $28 million available to us over the next two years for the SLOSS program. And then we talked about how to, how to budget that money. And I made recommendations on a number of categories. And I think we'll talk in detail more about this at a later date, but there was some discussion about maybe needing a little more money in the capital improvement program for the buildings for City Hall. Maybe a little more, maybe another half million dollars for parks improvements. But in general, I think this is kind of the budget we're, we're working with. And, but you see highlighted there, over two years, we would anticipate to spend $14 million on resurfacing. And that, that pretty much complies with our pavement management plan that we had done a couple of years ago, where they recommended in order to, because our street's in such bad shape, we need to spend about $7 million a year to have an increasing PCI score. So that's the rate that we're recommending.
While you switch slides, so you, there are no changes to this as of now? You have not made the adjustments for parks?
I have not made the adjustments yet. This is what was shown to you at the retreat.
Okay.
So tonight, I just wanted to focus strictly on the resurfacing program. I've got with Brandon at Parks and part of the budget is reserved for him. So we've come up with a new, a new sport to play. And that is a street golf. Because we have so many potholes, we thought this would be a great recreation sport for many of our subdivisions.
Ken, that's a terrible joke.
I have a, I have a weird sense of humor. But, but over the next two years, we really want to make a lot of progress. And we think we have a really good plan to present to you. Just going back a bit, since we got our pavement management plan, the first year in 2020, we talked about how we wanted, you know, what our strategy was. And we said that we really wanted to pave our main roads first and get a handle on those and get our average scores up on our main roads and then kind of tackle the subdivisions. The first year, we did a bit of a hybrid approach. Players wanted to include some subdivisions as well, but you see, we, last year, we paved Crossvale, a part of Phillips Road, part of Mall Parkway, Pinola, Rock Springs, and Evans Mill. So we paved all or part of those streets. And then we threw in some subdivision streets as well. Some of those had, we had a lot of complaints about. And some of those in the blue there were left unfinished by the developer. They were untopped and hadn't been that way for a long time. So we, we put those on the list as well. So if you'll notice, I've got the PCI scores there. On the main roads, I don't have a district because in my mind, collectors and arterials are kind of district neutral. Everybody uses those roads to go between the city and in and out of the city. So I've not put districts on the main roads. But there you see that in the subdivisions, every district was represented last year except District 4. When, when we talked at the retreat about our strategy moving forward in the next two years, we had another kind of a hybrid approach with the main roads and some subdivisions. There was discussion about what I call geographic equity that we wanted to try to represent all districts. But then it was also discussed that we really need to continue to focus on our main roads. And that's our proposal to you this evening. For next year, these are the main roads that we would propose to resurface. And again, I have not included districts. I haven't even looked at it. I feel certain that all the districts are represented. But anyway, this is going from worst to first. Our very worst rated main road, starting with South Goddard and moving up to Rock Springs. We feel like we can do all of these streets next year with a budget of $7 million. And that, that would be huge for our road network. That would get our, our minimum score over 50. So we're making a lot of progress if we can continue that for one more year and knock out our, our main roads and get those up to speed. And then the following year, we would go into our local roads. And what I'm showing you here is what we feel like we could do next year with our $7 million budget. And again, this is taking all of the politics out of it, is only looking at the data and looking at the worst rated subdivision streets. Now, some of these, we call them super sections. Some of them are subdivision with multiple streets. And some of them are just one single, one single road. It just depends. But this is the way it shook out. As you can see, all districts are represented multiple times. I mean, it's not gonna be totally equal because obviously, some districts have road conditions worse than others. Some districts are larger than others, which means they have more miles of roads. So this, this is what we feel like would be a a fair and responsible way to pave our streets next year. This, it doesn't look like so much, but this, this is a total of 34 super sections, which again, could be an individual, individual street like a Plunkett Road or a Ragsdale Road, or it could be a subdivision. But this total is 92 streets and 14 miles. So with this two-year plan, my message and I think our message to our citizens would be, you know, we know your subdivision are in bad shape. We understand that. Just hang in there for another year. We want to get our major roads up to the acceptable level first. The following year, we're going to hit our subdivision streets and really start making a dent. And as you can see, we'll get up to a minimum PCI score all the way up to 35.
Ken, how these road, excuse me, Ken, how was these roads determined again?
This is our pavement management study that was completed about a year ago. So I said, so again, our minimum score will be 35. Now, in the little time we've had since our retreat, we haven't been able to ride every one of these streets and get all the detailed estimates that's required. That's gonna take a lot of time to put that together. But I just wanted to give you, I wanted to lay out a plan for you. A systematic plan. Going down the list, and we'll go as far as we can. We may be able to get more than that when we get down to it. We, for $7 million, we may have actually be able to add a few more. But that's, that's, that's our proposed approach. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Council?
Well, Ken, I've not gotten quite where I can see what you're talking about. But I will just continue to say Woodrow, Woodrow Road has to be paved. It's a thoroughfare. It's a thoroughfare. And I didn't hear Woodrow at all. And so I'm going to, again, petition for Woodrow to be included. Not gonna talk subdivisions right now, but I will, I will say Woodrow has to, something has to be done about Woodrow. Truly. And if it's not done, then you need to tell me why we can't get it out there. Because I know in comparison to some of the others that you, you've mentioned, that it's, 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 it's worse than. So again, I can't see yet. I'm still trying to make it home. But that's, that's what I wanted to just speak about right there.
I have, Ms. Grimes, I'll have to look at that. Out of 92 streets, honestly, I don't know if Woodrow Road is on the list or not. If it's not, it's because it wasn't one of the worst rated roads. It's strictly data-driven. If we want to put in roads that are rated higher, then, you know, certainly we can use that approach too.
Okay, I just know you said it was about a year and a half out. So maybe since you last, since you last took your data source or, you know, got your stats together, something may have changed, but Woodrow is bad. And that is, that, that comes straight out of New Birth. If, if you're not familiar with where Woodrow is, it comes straight out of New Birth and runs straight across Evans Mill. And so I, again, I just asked you to make a, not a mental note, but write it down on maybe some things to reconsider, if you will.
I will, I will look at that and I'll get back to you personally in a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Ken, this is supposed to be based on the science. And every once in a while, your science is gonna be challenged. And I think that's what's happening here. And we're gonna look at it in some other areas as well. And to Councilman, Councilwoman Grimes' point. And that is that things do change over the course of 12 months. I will take Rock Springs Road as an example. It has become a major cut through, particularly when there's a backup on our 20. Somehow, the navigation system directs people to get off of, at Evans Mill, cut through Rock Springs and back on at Wester Chapel or something like that. So the traffic in this area has increased tremendously. So I think that will probably change numbers, not just on Rock Springs, but on some other streets as well. So to the Councilwoman's point, we need to make sure we have a way of updating on a regular basis as to our ratings. And that's why I raised the question earlier, at the, at the retreat, as well that we were solely relying on the Stand Text device that we use once every three years thereabout. Are we using some other means to manually collect data if there's nothing else in place to help us to update it regularly?
Well, Councilman, I would just say that, that, you know, it is a, it is, is an engineering study. Nothing's perfect, but we think it's a pretty good study. And it is a snapshot in time. However, you, in order to make a plan, you, you have to have the data. If you, if you continue to change the data, it's really hard to be able to plan. What I would propose is that we, we go ahead and kind of commit to a two-year plan. Certainly, we can look at individual streets if we need to, but we, we need to have a plan in place so that we know how to, how to budget and and how to move forward. And certainly, by the end of this two-year plan, I would propose that we, we redo another study. Because as you say, roads age differently. You have trucks on some roads. You have, sometimes you have poor base that the roads deteriorate faster than others. So I would think at the end of this two-year plan, we would certainly want to reevaluate everything.
One of the side effects is that a lot of the school buses haven't been traveling our roads about the last year almost. So that, I don't want to say it's been a plus, but it has hasn't caused the damage that it would have caused had they been running. But you mentioned the number of miles that you are planning to cover over the next two years. What percentage will we have, will we have at the completion of this two-year paving cycle of the number of roads we have in Stonecrest?
You know, I don't recall the total mileage of the city. I'd have to run those calculations, you know, what, kind of what we've done in the last two years. And then what the, what we would do in the, in the next two years. I did, I did calculate roughly 14 miles next year for our subdivision streets. But, but in terms of the main roads and what percentage of the overall city, I'd have to run that number for you.
Yeah, just curious.
I, I have a question, if it's all right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ken, so I can get an understanding. Are you saying in reference to the Streets Council might suggest, as Councilwoman Grimes said earlier, that those roads will be considered, but in a two-year span, they won't be added to these, this list that we have now? Even if we feel that they are very, they're in dire need of repair?
What I'm suggesting is that we use the data that we have and, and take all of the kind of opinions out of it. If, if, if there's some streets in your district that you feel like are not represented, that, that should be, then certainly I'll, I'll look at the data. I'll, I'll give you an explanation as to why or why not it was, it was included. But if it's something that you do want to include on the list, and then you know, that's certainly something we could look at.
All right.
Ken, when, when might you be back physically in Stonecrest?
I'll show up whenever I'm needed, so.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's talk offline so that you and I can make a plan, because I want you to see this, because it's not an opinion. It's a fact. So I'd like, I'd like for your, your expertise in all the years that you've done this to, maybe we can meet there and take a look at it. And then you can either alleviate my, alleviate my concerns or add it to the list. It's either, I think it's be one or the other, so just let me know, okay? And so we can talk offline. All right.
Councilwoman Grimes, while you're doing that swing, Ken, by Rock Springs.
Don't you worry.
Rock Springs is on the list now.
Right, but Rock Springs on the, on the opposite end is on the list.
But Rock Springs only gets about a block. It's what's on there now.
But Rock Springs is how many miles, George?
It's a good three miles.
Three, four miles, right. You've got about 300 feet on this list.
Yeah, so I'd like for you to be the drone, Ken.
Well, I, I know, I mean, we, we could debate this for, for days and days. And this, this is the data that we have. It, again, it's not perfect, but we, we need to start somewhere and we, we need to start spending some money. So whatever you guys decide, we'll be glad to take the direction you want to go with.
Okay? Other questions?
I've got one more. So Ken, are when, when you, when we do bring this back to the council meeting to vote, will the entire budget be updated? Or are you only gonna ask us to move the 14 million along and then come back to the rest of it? Because today is not a voting meeting.
Yeah, I, I wish plans were here. Really, what I'm looking for today is to get a consensus that we're okay to move forward with the the 2021 list of, of main roads. So we can go ahead and put a bid package together and get that out. And once we receive the bids, make a recommendation and take that to City Council for, for award. But, but certainly, we, we I, I know you have the, we talked about the, the original SLOSS budget, which is way, way out of whack, that we need to revisit that as well. And we need to look at the, the overall SLOSS program. You know, I'm showing $28 million over the next two years and how you want to spend that. So we need, we want to look at the overall program as well. But it would sure be nice to get a consensus to move forward on this next year.
So the next year is 7 million, not 14?
Correct.
Right, for the 2021 roads and its main roads?
That's correct.
So I'm curious, like, maybe this is a Mayor Pro Tem, Janice Allen, or Winston Demar question. I mean, I would think that this is serious enough to need a vote versus a consensus. Even if that means a quick special call meeting to get that done. But I'm just curious if, if, you know, what is, what's the opinion on not just voting on the RFP, but making sure that there's a vote on the, on the books for the 7 million for 2021 main roads?
Let me just say that it's unfortunate that we don't have a SLOSS management team in place to make all of this stuff happen on, on a regular schedule. But we are in a position where the work session gives us a chance to identify the item we want to put on the agenda. And if you think that by getting this on the agenda for the, I believe, what is the 25th? Well, whenever, then, two weeks from today, will be enough time for us to get the RFP together and us to make our paving schedule on time. Will that suffice, Ken, if we get this on the next regular meeting?
So, so as I understand it, you, you want to, in two weeks, vote on the specific street list for either the next year or two years? And then following that vote, we would go out to bid. It needs to be advertised for 30 days, receive the bids, and we need to take it back to council for the bid award. And then the contractor has to mobilize. So we're talking probably May or June. $7 million is a lot of paving. And this is gonna take months for a contractor to be able to do it. So, you know, we're, we're pushing the limit, but if, if you're not ready to move forward tonight and you want to wait for two weeks, then whatever the pleasure of council is.
Well, we had not indicated that we would have an action meeting tonight. We probably could do it and have a special call meeting within the next 24, 48 hours for the sole purpose of getting an RFP together, the necessary advertising and everything, so we can get street surfacing done. Nothing else, just the paving. Okay, I'll take other comments from the council.
Well, so I'm curious, I just want to make sure I understand. Are, Ken, are you saying that the two weeks, two weeks, if we wait two weeks, we're in June? But if we, if we don't wait two weeks, we're in another month? What? Help me understand the fact of the two weeks compared to June. This, with two weeks back, if we did it tomorrow, would we look, would we be looking like May or April or May? Or?
Well, I mean, two weeks is two weeks. The, the contractors are starting to fill up their, their schedule for the spring. I know Henry County's got a huge amount of paving that they've, they've got on the streets now. And these, these contractors are filling up their schedules. Obviously, you can only pave when it's 45 degrees and rising. So you run out of paving weather in November. So, you know, I always just like to try to get a good head start so we're not pushing into a late fall. But I'm not saying if you wait two weeks, then we won't get it done. You know, we'll, we'll do our best, whatever you want to do.
All right, no, I didn't know. I just was trying to clear up if those two weeks were critical to starting in June or not? Or is that gonna push us back to July or August?
It's gonna push you a little bit. It's, it's gonna push you not only two weeks, but, but, you know, depending on what the contractor's schedule is. And, and, you know, of course, we don't even know who the contractor's gonna be yet. So that's, that's hard to say, but.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think Attorney Denmark was about to speak, I think, when you spoke, George.
Okay. Attorney Denmark, are you giving us an opinion? I guess not. Go ahead with Councilwoman Grimes.
No, I was just gonna make one, one last statement that I'm really, really concerned that the data that we're looking at is is not current data. In the fact that it was not, it has not been secured in the last, you know, six to 12 months. You're saying that it's, it's a year and a half out? That just, that just concerns me for someone who drives these streets all the time. I understand the science and I understand, you know, that it's a engineering piece. But I'm, I'm really concerned that if some of, if some of the streets that I'm thinking about are left off, that, you know, I don't, I don't want to be hasty and spending the $7 million on streets that were bad, but not, may not have been the worst. So I, I just want my concerns to be, you know, to be, to be heard, that's all.
I hear you. Attorney Denmark, you got a comment?
Yeah, I apologize for trying to hit this mute button. I, I was going to say that to Councilwoman Cobble's concern that it's always better to make a record. And so to have an actual vote would be preferable, especially when we're dealing with matters like this, where we're gonna be thinking about these kind of expenditures. So if we're not going to do it tonight, which we're not at, at this work session, then either the next meeting in two weeks or a, or a special call meeting would be appropriate.
Okay, then that's something we can consider if we are so inclined within the next 24 to 48 hours to get this done. Because we knew paving was, the paving season was coming. And honestly, we should have had this done already. But we are where we are. So let's go from here. And I would suspect some adjustments can be made as we go along.
I, I have a question for Ken, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Ken, you know, regarding the, the data, which seems to be the main concern, I don't know what would pleasure council if we use, you know, other than, you know, I heard Councilwoman Grimes say updated data, which is, you know, I, I, that sounds reasonable enough to me that we work off the most updated and accurate data that we can. And, you know, based on your or whatever the consensus of experts, you know, opinions on getting this type of, you know, getting these types of, this type of work done. Same way we would do with an attorney or whoever, you know. So what we want, you know, I think I'm hearing correctly. You know, I don't know if we're ready to. You know, I don't know if we're ready to vote, you know, based on, you know, if on moving ahead. More so, I think, seems like we're heading in the direction of whether or not we have, you know, enough data, you know, to, to move ahead with these particular projects. And, you know, it seems to me that data issue is a bigger issue than the project issue. And, you know, I, I personally, I don't personally have a, you know, I, you know, maybe due to, you know, something I don't know, but you know, based on what I do know, I don't have a problem with the data that we have. I do think it's, it's actionable data, but I could be wrong. But if it eases the mind of the entire council, I think, you know, seems as if the data is going to be the thing that approached. So anyway, my question is this. What would it take to do another, another data study to support the, 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 the the roads that we have on this twenty twenty-one main roads list?
It would probably take another four or five months. First, you'd have to either, you know, you could, you could piggyback on the STAN-TAC proposal, or you could do another RFP, which, you know, that process takes a couple of months. And then you have to schedule the, the crews, wherever they are, and get them into town. That, that could take, you know, another month or two. And then the actual driving the streets and inputting the data, it'd probably be about a four or five month process. Certainly, we could, we could do that, we could do a whole new study if you want, but you're not going to get any paving done this year.
And my opinion is that, this is, I'm sorry, Councilman Clanton, will you finish?
Oh, I, I yield to you.
Okay, my opinion is that this is a two-year SPOSS plan, and if we get one year done, that's what we're working with now, and make all the necessary adjustments in year two to make sure that we cover any area that might have been slighted, so to speak. And if that means revisiting the science, then we can revisit the science of how we arrived at those numbers. But we went through this at the end of last year about an opportunity to get some paving done, and we were unable to make that happen, and I understand why. But let's not get caught in that now, and delay this process such that we don't get our paving done for twenty twenty-one. And to be honest with you, it's being threatened right now. Because the weather is right, and we should be ready to go to paving in the next thirty to sixty days.
So are we just really looking at what we're looking at now, those main roads, twenty twenty-one? Those are the ones we're talking about? Getting taken care of? Am I correct? Ken?
Yes, sir, that's our proposal for, for this, for this coming year, and we could upon approval, we could probably have a bid on the street within a couple of weeks. Yeah, I mean, we, we can, that's, that's our recommendation, is to focus on these main roads. And then before next year, we can do whatever you want. We can go with the data we can, we have, we can supplement that with, you know, whatever we need to, or we could, we can throw it all out and start a, start a whole new study. Whatever you want to do, but we'd really like to get going with some, some paving this year.
So, so with, with that being said, you know, you know, I, I think we, it's just my own personal opinion, opinion that we, we move ahead with at least this list that we have in front of us right now. That we immediately start looking at, you know, data options, not waiting until next year or until midsummer. At the same time, we approve this set and move immediately to, you know, to make whatever recommendation council feel that we need to make in regards to data, so that we can be, you know, assured that we are, we are hitting the right spots as for our road, road paving. Because if the data is outdated, it's just outdated, you know, but, you know, but if it's not outdated, you know, I don't want to miss an opportunity. So I think, in, in my own opinion, that this will be a decent compromise to move with, at least this year is part of the list, and then immediately look at the data, getting, getting data that we all can live with and understand completely.
Then here in the objection, I will ask the city clerk to make note that we're going to consider a special call meeting on Wednesday, or Thursday of this week. We'll have to work out the details for the purpose of acting on this item.
Can we add two items to that agenda? One is to act, act on the item with the twenty twenty-one road, main roads, and then the second one is to go ahead and approve, you know, or make recommendations as to the data process for the next batch, so that we don't, you know, run into this problem again, so we can go ahead and take it all off the books at once.
Well, just personally, I would think we would take care of this emergency, and right now the urgency is to get this twenty twenty-one paving moving, but that's a pleasure of council. Any other comments in regards to that suggestion?
The only comment I would make to that, unless, well, we probably need to give Gia an opportunity to look at the the past RFP, or I don't think we did a RFP for STAN-TAC. I think, I think y'all self-sourced it, but whatever it was, gives you an opportunity to look at the procurement that happened last year for the road rating analysis, and let her give us a recommendation on the, on the best way forward to procure that service. Again, there, it may be a contract amendment, it probably is not. But I think we should let her guide us on the best way to procure road rating services, so that may not be something she can pull together by Wednesday or Thursday.
That's reasonable, I, I, that's, that's a good idea. I agree, Councilwoman Cobble.
Okay, then, Madam City Clerk, we'll consider six o'clock Wednesday, or six o'clock Thursday, unless there's some objection from council.
So again, okay, so let me understand, you know, we're just going to be considering voting for the roads and all, am I correct, not an RFP for any type of contractors moving forward to do this work?
Whatever the first step is to get this moving forward.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I have Wednesday or Thursday about six PM, but someone on the council, will they, will you all send me an email confirming the date, so I can get notice out to the newspaper?
Once we determine what date works best for us, we'll email you either this evening or first thing tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay, Ken, do you have anything else?
No, I appreciate your time this evening, this was some good discussion, and look forward to getting back with you later this week.
There were some other things you had on the agenda that we talked about in the retreat, with the transportation study and intersection improvements, so forth and so on. We're not going to go into that.
We were only going to discuss the resurfacing program today. I think at a later date, Plaid, hopefully the next work session, Plaid wanted to discuss in detail all the various programs that we're recommending. I, I did feel like we got a consensus at the retreat on the monobust pads, so we are moving forward with that bid. And we're putting together some sidewalk details for what I call the, the tier-one sidewalk projects. Those are ones that we can go out to construction really quickly without doing a lot of engineering design. But anyway, that would, that would be part of a, I guess, a broader presentation on the SPOSS program.
So Ken, with those items that you just mentioned, those other projects, there's no pressing timeline for those?
Oh, there's always a pressing timeline, because I like to spend money.
I see you do.
And, but, but responsibly, responsibly. We've got a lot of money in the bank, and, you know, I, I think the citizens want us to, to be responsible and spend this money on road improvement, so we're anxious to move forward, but certainly, you know, we take direction from you guys.
In regards to that, I don't think we anticipated having the money in the bank to spend on these projects. We were supposed to borrow the money well in advance and having, and, and make these projects happen before now. But since we didn't, money has accumulated, and I guess to our benefit that we don't have to pay interest on the loan, we are able to pay for it as we go. So I guess that's a good thing. Okay, if that's it, we thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, guys.
The next item on the agenda is zoning ordinance update. Mr. Wheeler, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Then it belongs to you. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Not ready?
This is Councilwoman Cobble, yep. I wanted to, to ask you, and maybe I should have brought this up earlier when I was looking through the agenda. It seems like this, this part is going to be rather lengthy, the zoning update, there's quite a bit of meat there. Is the next item on the agenda less lengthy, that maybe we could knock that out first and then spend the rest of our time on zoning? Because I think this zoning update, I doubt if it's going to be short.
It's been my experience, what we think is short winds up being long, and sometimes what we think is long winds up being short. I have no way of knowing along either one of these is going to take.
Um, okay, yeah, I mean, that's a good point. I was just thinking about the folks that have the next item to have to wait through what we probably already know is going to be a long presentation to get to the final short one. But it was just a suggestion.
Yeah. Well, let's just stick with the, the agenda. Unless there's some real pressing rationale.
Well, other than, I don't know that there's actionable item from that. Isn't, the next one is the DMO and the CBB?
Yes, number, well, item C is, yes.
Attorney Denmark would have to tell us if that would be long or not. But anyway, I was just trying to be considerate of something that might have been a lot shorter than this, having to wait behind a two, you know, a two-hour item, when one is probably like thirty minutes.
Okay. Okay, Attorney Denmark.
Yes, sir.
Is this going to be short this week with item C?
Yeah, I mean, yes, sir, other than what I've said to you in writing, there's not much more to say. I presented a proposed resolution and kind of given an update on some things that I've looked, researched. So I don't anticipate it'll be a long item on my end. There may be some discussion about the selection of a DMO. And, but other than that, I anticipate, I could tell you what I need to say in five minutes or less.
Council, I've heard from Councilwoman Cobble, is there any objection to moving this item to C to be number, well, item B, reverse the order of the zoning ordinance update and the destination marketing organization?
I have no objections, we got, we're going to cover both of them anyway, so I'll do.
No objections.
Then here in the objection, then Attorney Denmark, I believe the floor is yours. Mr. Wheeler, if you don't mind, please stand by.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. So the information that I shared with council earlier today, and I apologize for not getting that to you sooner, but I was direct attached with presenting you with some options as it relates to the convention and visitors bureau. We've talked about that being an entity that's a government body, not a DMO, but a government body that would exercise the powers that the city has under the charter as it relates to tourism. And we don't have a Stonecrest Convention and Visitors Bureau activated presently. I included my prior memorandum from February, which talks about the fact that the private entity, Stonecrest Convention and Visitors Bureau, Inc., which was set up in November, December of, of last year, is not the public body talked about in the charter. You would have to activate that entity, and I've given you a proposed resolution to do that. So there are two issues before the council. One is whether or not you want to activate the convention and visitors bureau created in the charter, and then secondarily, do you want to contract with a DMO? On the latter piece, you kind of have to do that, because under state law, once you get the hotel motel tax above a certain level, now you're obligated to have a DMO and transfer a percentage of those funds to the DMO. And so we're above that statutory threshold, so we have to have a DMO at this point. And since we ended our relationship with the side to CAB, we don't have a DMO. And I know the mayor, I haven't made some efforts to locate one, him and, and the staff. I was a part of some of those conversations, but not all of them, so as I sit here now, I do not know where that stands. What I can speak to is activating the convention and visitors bureau. It is my recommendation that the council do that. And I talked about, in, in some communities, they, they only have a DMO. So the DMO does everything from a tourism marketing perspective. But in other communities, they have both a DMO and they have a, a government body that exercises tourism functions. For instance, I, I referenced the Clayton County situation, where they have the Clayton County Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is a private, nonprofit, five oh one C six organization, a totally private entity that serves as the county's DMO. Clayton County also has the Clayton County Tourism Authority, which is a government body, much like our Planning and Zoning Commission or any other government body, that is appointed by the county commissioners. And so their DMO and Tourism Authority kind of work hand in hand to accomplish everything that the county wants to accomplish with regard to which tourism and convention, trade show type efforts. And so our charter contemplates that very same model. Because in section one oh three, one point zero three of the charter, it creates the Stonecrest Convention and Visitors Bureau as a public body, but then also says that the city can contract with private nonprofits for marketing purposes. So essentially it's saying, we're going to have the convention and visitors bureau, which is public, and then a private DMO that will also work with the city pursuant to a contract. And so since that was the theory of our government as set forth in our charter, it is my recommendation that the council activate the convention and visitors bureau. And I proposed a, a structure for it. I, I'm not seeing any public bodies set up as anything other than a board of directors. And so I think that model works well, and so I have recommended and proposed in the resolution that the council activate it as a, a board, and, and then the council would appoint members. I propose that there'd be seven members, obviously you can go three, five, twelve, whatever the council sees fit. But I proposed, just because I needed to put something in the resolution, seven members, that each council member selects one, and then the mayor selects two, so we would have seven, which would, would be kind of a good number from a voting perspective. Again, purely a recommendation, and the council can go in any direction you see fit. So, so I think, though, that having Stonecrest Convention and Visitors Bureau activated as an arm of the city for tourism purposes would be beneficial, in addition to having a DMO, which would have a much more limited role.
Okay. Mr. Boone?
I'm sorry, I take myself off mute. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Turner, we were, were, were charged with finding a DMO for the, for the, for the, the city to consider. A very wise suggestion was made at the, at the, the last, the last work session, I believe it was by, by Councilwoman Grimes, that we look for an opportunity for, an opportunity within the city, a chamber of commerce or an entity such as that. The, the, the only problem we have is that the Chamber of Commerce, that the Stonecrest Chamber of Commerce does not have the five, five oh one C six designation necessary to be a, to be a DMO. Attorney Denmark, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm correct with, with that. But, but we, we, we certainly, looking at the options that exist in the city. The Stonecrest Business Alliance, I believe it's now the Business and the Business and Community Alliance, has that designation. That is an organization that we are looking at, but because of the fact we want to make sure that everything is proper according to the, to the, the information that Attorney Denmark has found. They are, they are being considered as we look for other opportunities. I believe that we are, that I believe that we are, that um, in talking to uh, to executives that I know from the tourism industry. We um, we are, are, are looking to be able to find and fine tune a, a list for you for that. So we didn't want to come in with one while we wanted to be able to make sure that the city council was, was pleased with the, with the selection and had options to choose from.
Okay, um. Counsel, questions?
I have two questions, um, Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes.
Um, they're for Attorney Denmark. Um, the first question is, so uh, the DMO um, is the only um, body? That is authorized to use the hotel motel tax portion? Is that correct?
No, 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 um, under the statute, uh, and I don't have the formula in front of me, but we have to allocate a certain portion of the funds to the DMO. Uh, the statute prescribe a certain amount, I mean, a, a schedule, certain amount goes to the general fund, certain amount goes to the DMO, certain amount. And, and so I, I, I don't think that um, the DMO is the only entity that we can transfer hotel motel tax funds to. But we have to follow the statute which, which lays it out and I just don't have it in front of me right now.
So, so I think it's uh, sixty forty. Um, the hotel motel tax forty percent goes to tourism. I think that's the number. Um, so whatever that percentage is though, I guess my question was, is that only, does that tourism portion, whatever that percentage is, that's only authorized for the DMO?
Yeah, yeah, the, the part that has to go to be transferred, it, that goes to the DMO. Now, the portion that the city retains, I mean, it can go to the general, you can do what you want with that, so. You know, you could use it for some tourism purposes.
Okay, okay, so that, I think, so I should have asked that question better. The, the forty percent or whatever that number is, that has to go to door tourism can only go to the DMO?
Yes.
Okay, and so how it, so twofold question now for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Um, one, would we fund that through our general fund like we do? All the other boards and authorities and commissions? Um, that's question one. And then question two is, are they similar to other boards, commissions and authorities able to generate revenue themselves? Will we need an IGA with this um, board, commission or authority similar to the others? Um, so that's two questions and one, I guess.
Sure, well, let me answer the second one first. They, they, they would be a board uh, of, of the city. And so it would not be like, for instance, say, the Housing Authority or the Development Authority, which is a separate and distinct legal entity. Such that you would need to have a uh, an IGA because they're not a part of the city. The Convention and Visitors Bureau uh, is an agency in instrumentality of the city of Stonecrest, much like the Planning Commission. So you would not need an IGA with, 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 with that entity, it, it's a part of the city. Um, you wouldn't need to have um, uh, if the limitations that you would want to set would have to be set forth in the activating um, um, a resolution. And perhaps in the, the bylaws. And so they, they would um, to the extent they would, would, would have bylaws and need them. But you, you would have to kind of limit what they uh, did that way. But it, it's, it's a board of the city as opposed to a distinct entity that you would have to contract with.
Okay, so that probably answers the first question then. We would provide whatever resources.
Yes.
Did to conduct the business of the city, okay.
Anyone else? Mr. Boone, uh, help me to understand more about uh, what it is that you looked at or who it is that you looked at? In terms of a model um, group to conduct this uh, operation for us?
That's a great question. So, so we, so I, I looked at, at uh, at DMOs, Destination Marketing Organizations that are, that are in, that are in the um. That are available. I took a look at our, at, at what I would consider to be a comp set, competitive set of cities that are, that are comparable in size and size, scope, demographics of the city of Stonecrest. To take a look at who, at uh, at their organizations. There are, there are a few that I pinpointed that were, that were, were very close. I also included some that were originally like it, like it, like Atlanta and some other, some other areas. That have a DMO available, that have a DMO, but they, but some of these do not accept outside cities to contract with. Uh, and then the others that did, they were, uh, we, we talked about their uh, the scope of services that they would be able to, they'd be able to provide. And to be honest with you, the administrative costs in some of these were, were prohibitive in terms of being able to spend money to be able to source and to source for Stonecrest. Uh, versus uh, versus being able to take attention from their own. In many cases, they were comp, they were, they would have been competitive to the city of Stonecrest. And it would be like uh, like putting money into a, into a pot and being managed by someone that uh, that was your competitor. So we wanted to be able to take a look at some other options as it relates to other, to other uh, other DMOs that existed. And many of those are, as Attorney Denmark mentioned, I think at, at one of the earlier, earlier meetings. They have a DMO and a CBB within house, they're two different organizations, but they're in house. So you've got to look at how, at how you, you're spending your money. And as it relates to them being able to provide a service that's beneficial to the city versus uh, protecting their own interest. So that was, that was one reason why I wanted to be able to make sure that, to take a look at the opportunity of looking at something in the city as well as looking some, for something outside.
Yeah, and, and I do understand that if you get someone local, they may well be our competitors.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and uh, it's hard to pay someone to compete against you.
Absolutely.
Um, then are there organizations on a national scale or international scale that perform this service yet you know of?
There are, uh, I, I look, and, and, and broadening my, broadening my search, I looked, uh, I looked last week at uh, at, at uh, DMOs that exist that are, that are national DMOs. Um, and I have, I've sent information out to them and I'm, I'm waiting to get some information back. But tho- but those are organizations that are, that are specifically designed to be marketing organizations. I just want to make sure that we get the benefit for the uh, for the amount of money that we will have to spend.
Okay, Attorney Denmark, back to you. I think you mentioned uh, the, the urgency of getting this done. Uh, are we about to hit a, hit a deadline?
Um, well, sir, we, we need to do it as quickly as we can because obviously we should have already transferred uh, certain monies uh, to the DMO. And it, I've stated in the past that it's my recommendation that we kind of escrow these monies that we should have, you know, and not, and just kind of segregate those funds. Um, uh, you know, we, Department of Community Affairs, um, it, it could become an issue. Um, and so we just need to kind of do this as quickly as we can.
Okay, Mr. Boone, the pressure's on.
Yeah, it won't, it won't, it won't be, it won't be a, be a long time and a long search. I'm thinking about, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get a feel for, we're gonna try to get this on the agenda.
So we're looking at this for the uh, council meeting? You'll possibly have something, Mr. Boone, by council meeting in two weeks?
I believe we will, I believe we will. That's the goal.
Uh, may I, um, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, sir, please.
I guess my question is going to be, once we decide, if we, uh, when we decide on the DMO. What is the committal that we have to have to that DMO? In other words, since time is of the essence, if we make a short-term committal to a DMO, is that something that we can do? And then uh, and it, at the same time, continue our search? So, you know, if we transferring money to say a short-term, for lack of a better term, uh, DMO. How hard would it be to move that money to our long-term DMO after we have plenty of time to make it search? So what I'm trying to figure out is, do, can we finagle a way to make a quick decision in lieu of a better decision?
It's, it's a matter of contract, sir. Uh, so obviously we would have to contract with the DMO and um, uh, we could negotiate those kind of terms. And obviously, if, if we've, for instance, terminated uh, the DMO, we hired a DMO in the near term. And we said, for whatever reason, it was the will of the city not to continue uh, to use them as a DMO. Uh, well, well, clearly they can't keep our money, um, and, but we would. I would draft the contract and the contract would contemplate that scenario and, and we would be um, um, you know, covered in that instance.
Good, thank you, sir. Anything else?
I have a few more questions, um. Um, I guess I'll go out and ask Clarence first. Are there, in your research, are there any cities in the county? That have a DMO independent of Discover the Cab?
Yes, yes, in, in fact, in fact, one of the uh, one of the conversations I'm having, having tomorrow is with uh, is with one of those cities.
Okay, good. That'll, that probably will give us a good feel for another city in the cab, um, using an independent um, DMO.
And, and Councilwoman Cobble, if I, if I can expand on that, the, the, the particular DMO that I'm looking, I'm looking at. Is one that would not be competitive with, with uh, with us, with uh, Stonecrest on this part of the county. But one on the northern side that would be, would be uh, out of our, out of our general demographic.
Oh, okay. Okay, good to know, thank you. Attorney Denmark, this question is for you, is um. So this would, I'm assuming this, this would be considered a sole source, um, the DMO, um, since we're not putting it out to bid.
Right.
Okay, um. So we've made some changes to the purchasing policy about sole source. So I guess it, while there's, while Clarence and team are, are looking for the recommendation. Um, we probably need to make sure that Gia is involved in. How to actually bring forward the recommendation to council, seeing that the sole source process has changed from the prior purchasing policy.
Yeah, we, obviously, uh, you know, it's strange you should say that because just, you know, over the weekend, I was thinking about. Compliance with procurement and um, and whatever we need to do in that regard, we need to do and, and, and the scrubs and myself and. Can make sure that we're legally on all fours in that regard, but I mean, um, obviously we're going to do the, we, we, we may be for some reason. Able to sole source it or whatever the case might be, but we're going to study that and do whatever the policy requires us to do.
Okay, um, I don't know if G is on the line and, and as a matter of fact, this may not be something she might have to answer to right now anyway. Um, but you said something a few minutes ago that struck me and I'm, and it struck a question rather, which was. Um, when you were explaining to Councilman George Turner that we needed to do this kind of expeditiously because we needed to have already. Sent those funds by law over to a DMO. Um, and we probably need to do something to go ahead and segregate that now so that when the time is ready, we. You know, we know that we haven't done something with that portion of the money by accident that we should not have. Do we know, and again, Gia, if you're on the line, I know you may not have this in front of you and. This is not really a procurement question, probably more of an accounting question. Um, but do we know that since the time that we left the agreement with Discover the Cab to now? That we have not spent that money in a place by, even if it was by accident or unintentionally? Um, and, and do we have dollar for dollar the amount that we should have for all of the years that we have not been? In a contract with a DMO?
This is Gia, um, yes, Councilwoman Cobble. I have not had a chance to look at that in detail, that is more of an accounting question. It would take me a, a day or so to look at those numbers, to see where we are and what transpired and kind of get a historical perspective. Before making any uh, attempt to report what was done. Um, as you well know, everybody knows that um, our accounting manager is no longer here, so it would take me a day or so to, or a couple of days to get that information. To attempt to get that information.
Okay, okay, no worries. It's not something I had thought of prior to um, Attorney Denmark making that statement. And I thought, oh, so we, we probably are by law supposed to have all of that percentage for each year that we have not been with the DMO. And just curious if, if we have secured that in a place or encumbered that somewhere? Um, where we couldn't, where we couldn't touch it until we actually had a DMO in place um, to do that, okay.
And, and my question, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, if I may ask.
Please, go ahead.
Would follow on the back to what uh, Councilwoman Cobble just said. There, and it's a question, would there, would, could we be penalized for not having this done? And I don't know who's would answer that, I don't know if that's you, uh, Attorney Denmark or you, Ms. Groves. Is there a penalty that we could face for not having this done? Um, since leaving uh, the Decide the Cab and I, I know that was before me, but still.
Yes.
That's not what I wanted you to say.
Yeah, well, yeah, Councilwoman, uh, I, I guess what, what I'm trying to do is trying to avoid. Um, an extended conversation about the uh, the, the worst case scenario. We, we, this process is regulated by Department of Community Affairs, by, by the state of Georgia and so. Um, aspect with everything, you know, there, there are compliance issues and um, I, I'm electing to kind of focus on getting us squared away. Um, and you know, not necessarily have an extended conversation that will um, lead to, you know, the state.
I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement. Okay, so may I ask, uh, Mr. Boone, one question? When you, when you continue to have your conversation this week with the DMO that. Or with the city who uses the DMO that we might, you might be considering? Um, will you just bring us one, will you, will you bring us two? How, how will you present that information to us for us to, or is, how will you present that information to us?
I, I want to present, present uh, candidates for you that are, that'll be good for the city. Some that know that, that know the city will have the city's best interests at heart. Uh, once again, as I mentioned before, to uh, to Mayor Pro Tim Turner that, that a lot of, a lot of these are available that are competitive. To be able to make sure that someone, someone is presented to you that will, will use this, the, the, the dollars associated. The dollars received from the hotel motel tax to the best of our ability to attract, to attract business, to be able to support our, our city. So if it's, if it, if it, if it's one, if it's two, if it's three, it'll be a very short list.
Okay, and then Attorney Denmark, after we have decided upon a DMO. It, the ti- I know everything is quick, but we, would we need to call a special call meeting to do anything to make this effective? Or once we agree upon vote? Is it then um, uh, up and ready from that point?
No, ma'am, we, we're gonna have to have a contract with the DMO. And so I would not recommend that we transfer money to an entity uh, with whom we have no contract. Um, so uh, we would draft the contract and once the, a template of one, uh, and the council would have to. Vote uh, to use uh, this particular DMO and then we didn't turn into a contract with them.
How, how can we be working on this kind of uh, concurrently? Versus waiting until we find somebody and then do a contract? Is it, is it possible? Like you just, I think you may have just spoken to it when you said a template of or skeleton kind of.
Sure, we, we've done it before, we, we've drafted contracts between cities and DMOs on, on, on multiple occasions and so. Um, it, it would be a, a fairly simple thing. I mean, if, if we got, if the council voted on a DMO um, tonight, uh, I could have a contract ready to, to present to that DMO, close the business tomorrow.
Oh, okay, well then, no worries, okay, that's it. My, my concerns are eliminated, got it.
Attorney Denmark.
I have a question there, Pro Tim.
Go ahead, sir.
And reference to the uh, DMO uh, and the tourism part of, will they be working with like the Film Commission in reference to promoting things such as that?
Yeah, yes, sir, I mean, they, they, they would um, their, their mandate would be to, 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 to bring people to Stonecrest. Um, you know, to our restaurants, to our hotels, uh, to shopping, dining, film, wha- 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 whatever. And, and I think that would be kind of the policy directive that would come from uh, the, the city and uh, the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
And would that just be for people or will it be also for like production companies and studios and things such as that, trying to promote them to come also?
Yeah, I mean, exactly, because you know, we, we see a lot of things with tourism, it's not just, you know, you know, families come. I mean, you know, it, it's, it's trade shows and conventions and, and it might be other, so, so, so it's a much broader concept. Which could include what you're talking about, Councilman.
Good, thank you.
Attorney Denmark, uh, you spoke of the, the resolution that you were strongly recommending that we uh, put together to create. Uh, the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Uh, there exists right now an organization that's been um, incorporated, that carries the same name. Is that going to be an issue?
Not, not for the city, sir, I mean, the, the, that's a private entity. Um, it's a private corporation um, that has no affiliation with the city of Stonecrest. Uh, what I'm talking about is creating, uh, activating the public body that was created in the charter. So I mean, it, it carries the same name, um, which might be confusing to some because it calls itself Stonecrest Convention and Visitors Bureau Inc. Well, that's a private entity and what we're talking about is the Stonecrest Convention and Visitors Bureau created by the city. Well, that's a private entity, and what we're talking about is the Stonecrest Convention and Visitors Bureau created by the city's charter, which is a public body that the city council would activate and appoint members to. So totally different entity, totally different thing. And so like, that's why I included my memo from February the second, where I indicate that that private entity is not the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is a public body created in the charter, and it is also not the city's DMO. So and I I refer to it as a stranger to the city. It has no relationship to the city of Stonecrest as either a public entity or as a private business partner. It just has nothing to do with the city.
I I understand. I just that I didn't want the confusion to be there when you have two organizations with the same name, a very similar name, that could cause all kinds of confusion. So we need to consider that when we um consider the resolution.
Also, Mr. Mayor Protem, if I might add, I I I do believe that that organization will probably dissolve itself. I don't think they they would actively seek to do business in Stonecrest. Um, you know, given the way that the organization attempted to start. So I think the attempt was a good faith attempt uh to create a convention bureau. And I think, you know, that same good faith would would, I would presume, would would establish itself, you know, in dissolving itself and uh and really relinquishing the the that entire name. Because there's no, there's no sense for it to continue to exist otherwise. That's just an opinion.
Yeah, again, and that those are things that we can consider and have some hard ask. But again, what's legal is legal and illegally, illegally exists. Okay, so uh we want to get this item on the agenda for consideration of the resolution. And Mr. Boone is going to do what he can to bring us a few choices for the uh the DMOS.
Sir.
Mayor Protem, um I don't disagree with um putting the um resolution for the CVB on the agenda. I think obviously depending on when we get the recommendations for the DMO, like should we get them, you know, a few days before the meeting? I doubt that that will, you know, give us time to prepare for a vote. Um so I would not suggest that we put the DMO on the agenda until we know if we'll have those to consider, you know, within a reasonable amount of time leading up to that meeting. Um but actually, but I also had uh one more question for Attorney Denmark about the DMO. Um Clarence mentioned the Stonecrest Business Alliance. Um and if, and Clarence, you can clear this up for me if I'm mistaken. Um but I believe that they, there are some developers as a part of that organization um as well as some um stakeholders that are hotel or motel owners or or CEOs or leaders of those organizations. It is there any kind of conflict with that makeup um of an organization being the DMO for the city, seeing that they are uh tourism dollars or tax dollars?
Council, was that for me or for Mr. Boone?
That was for you. I'm sorry.
Okay, um um I guess we would have to vet each uh situation independently. But what I do know is that for the most part, uh you want stakeholders and business owners to be a part of it because um they have some skin in the game. And so what you see in a lot of community is are uh hotel owners and restaurant owners and people like that um who you would want to be uh or uh part of the 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 DMO. Um because uh a lot of times, for at least for the hotels, I mean, it's their hotel motel tax dollars that are funding it and for the, you know, restaurants and and other businesses in the city. Well, they stand to gain and profit uh by um uh tourism coming to the city. So um so they have uh more of an incentive than practically anyone else to make sure that the DMO is successful. So it's not a conflict. It's probably just the opposite.
Gotcha. Okay, great. That's what I wanted to hear. So that's good.
Okay.
That's it.
Back to Councilwoman Cobble's comment about not putting the DMO on the agenda. I think we put it on the agenda, and if we think we haven't had enough time to uh vet it, then we can always defer it versus adding it at the last minute. I think this will um should apply to any item on the agenda. We haven't had enough time to uh consider it, then we just defer it. Uh deny it, either one.
Right, so Mayor Protem, does that mean that once Clarence and team come up with the list, that it goes to the attorneys first to kind of vet that to make sure the folks on the list are actually um eligible, and then that comes to us, and then we have a meeting? Is that what, is that what you're proposing or restating, I guess?
I think it could work either way. You know, it's just a matter of, we need to get this information and get it in a hurry. And uh whether we um feel that they are appropriate or not, if they don't meet the legal muster, then we move on to the next stage. So I think at some point it goes to legal to make sure that they meet all of the necessary legal requirements. And uh we will take a look at them and see if they have met uh our uh concerns.
Gotcha. Okay, I'm good.
Yeah. All right, anything else on this item? All right, then we're ready to move on to the next item. And Mr. Wheeler, thank you for being patient, and we're ready to hear from the zoning ordinance update.
Good evening, council. Um this item uh is the planning and zoning update. Um last time we actually came to talk to you guys uh was December third, uh was a December third workshop. And over the uh and during that workshop, we know we're, we went over extensively uh some of the policy decisions and new uh terms and new um uh zoning codes that the council desired to see in the update. Um staff and uh consultants went back and uh um and went back and have finally uh completed a draft uh with the all the new updates that council wanted to see. Um and this item was presented at the planning, at the March second Plan Commission uh uh for their, for their consideration. Um they did recommend um deferral as they wanted more time to review um the the updates. Um it was also suggested to staff that this item, that council wanted to have this item uh on today's, tonight's work session agenda to 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 discuss uh the updates. Um so Ms. Alexander is uh here to uh do a short presentation, um and then we'll take your questions afterwards. Ms. Alexander?
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us um back to talk about the zoning code update. Um I'm going to share my screen if I'm allowed and just to review where we were. Um we actually met twice with you. We had a long um workshop on December third, and then we came back and continued the discussion um January thirteenth. If you can see my screen, we shared this um with you to walk through the substantive changes that were made to the, that we were recommending be made to the code based on input from the community, from staff, from users, and also from, of course, all of you as elected officials. We had several interviews and opportunities to speak with you. Um we walked through these major, the the larger substantive items and reviewed them with you. And in end of the December third meeting, um you gave us indication on the policy direction. If you liked it or if you didn't like it, if you wanted to see it proceed, or if you didn't want to see it proceed. So some of those items had to do with some of the basics, which was updating um the zoning ordinance to reflect your new comprehensive plan, and so you gave us an indication to to move forward. We discussed with you um a zoning diet to make the code a little bit easier to use, to have less um pages and less doc um items and sections to confuse use readers and users of the code. We made some recommendations about that. You all told us that um you, there were some that you wanted to remove, but you also wanted to keep um one of the zoning districts. So we didn't touch that. We left the, um it was an office institutional um transitional zoning district. You wanted to make sure that stayed in the code. Um and so there were several others we went through that you indicated to keep, you know, moving forward as as indicated um from all of our discussions. Um one that we spent quite a bit of time on was um about the industrial uses. And we wound up um adding a s- a section into the draft as discussed with you um in the January work session um as well um to have um any of those more intense industrial uses, if they are adjacent to residential, that they would have to go through the SLEP process, the Special Land Use Permit. So that would require a public hearing, and it would require also I'm going through a list of standards um for some of the heavier uses, including things like EPD or some of the testing and and other aspects about um heavier and more intense industrial uses. Even though they were zoned M one, leave, excuse me, they were zoned M, leave them light industrial, um because some places it is appropriate, but where they're adj- adjacent to residential, to add that extra layer of public um review. We um added draft language regarding um some newer uses that are um coming up and are trending across the region related to smoking or having consumption of hookah or tobacco products like cigar bars, cigar lounges. You have some nuisance um issues that were occurring like with towing trucks, so we corrected that. And those were all what we reviewed with you in December, and we reviewed with you again in January um to make sure it was going to meet your intent. We spent quite a bit of time on the public notice, and we spent a lot of time discussing whether or not you wanted to have a community council. And so we had prepared a technical memo for you to consider since there were um a difference of opinion about how how a community council should look and how it should be um appointed and whether to have one or how or whether to have several. So we did not make any changes or any recommended changes or to the zoning ordinance. But we did give you a game plan, a work plan for moving forward to have the discussion because it sounded like there was strong interest in that. But you have a bit of discussion on how you really want it to operate and function. We also, as you may recall, talked quite a bit about the public notification. Um and we um increased in our draft to um public notification, that is, the letters that go out to adjacent property owners. Currently, your code has it, um I think it's only like two hundred fifty or five hundred, but we're recommending to extend that to a thousand. And there was a discussion if that's the right distance or not. Um so there was a a commentary from city attorney regarding that, that the broader, the broader you make it, the more um sort of susceptible you will be to folks who may not really be impacted um making claims. Um so while one thousand is actually much greater than most of the jurisdictions, we did do a survey and look around. Um you know, what are the common practices? Um cities like the city of Dunwoody has a thousand feet as well and other cities. Also, a thousand makes sense because you have larger properties. So the distance away is is gonna touch potentially fewer properties. So you wanted to have that thousand, which is, you know, greater than what you currently have. Um and then we reminded you that we went through um the entire code. We integrated about um a dozen um just under a dozen, you had about a dozen um amendments that you had made since the city became a city in twenty seventeen, and we integrated that all throughout the document. And we color coded that so folks could see and recall that that was made over the last couple of years. Um and we did a lot of formatting, cleaning up. We also made it easier for um the reader to use the Article Five that address architectural standards and address site layout, um stormwater, for example, um requirements for open space. So we separated those out and made them a lot easier to use. Um and we um provided for staff, in addition to the update that we are, we we provided um to to implement all of these policy changes, um we provided a series of technical memos, so um users can have sort of like a cheat sheet um to really understand what all their requirements are going to be. Um and then this memo that um we presented was just from the the, so I was mentioning the January thirteenth one, where we spent time um as I just described and reviewed, um we reviewed the public notification. We also looked at personal care homes. That was another one where we spent quite a bit of time to really understand what was the best way to regulate them. So in the draft ordinance now, we have an increased distance that um you you cannot have another personal care home unless it's it's gotta be fifteen hundred, a thousand five hundred feet or greater away from it. And we also corrected to be very clear that the owner of the business, of the of the personal care home had to reside in the home. So that had been um a a missing piece of the personal care home section. Um so that was really all I had in terms of a review of what you, we had talked with you and discussed and got direction to go ahead and draft the language that is enacting all of these changes to make the code both easier to use and to close some loopholes and to provide a little bit more public notification than what you had in the past.
Thank you very much. Counsel and questions? I have a couple. Um I have uh made a note by require all gas stations obtain a SLEP, and I put next to a moratorium. And I know we've uh enacted a moratorium on in a new gas station application. But um what changes other than that particular one, and we already suggested in terms of gas stations?
Um that it, you already had quite a few, um I'm just, I'm trying to scroll to it, and we can bring it up on the screen so you can see it um for the fuel pumps. We, we only remove, we 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 removed the um the opt-out, if you will. We added that just period that it's required, a special land use permit is required for all. And we maintained all of this list of standards regarding architectural treatment. Um let me bring it up instead of speaking from memory, kind of book chapter verse here. Fuel pumps. Okay, and I'm gonna, may I share the screen again? I'll, and we'll bring it to it so you can see how it's treated. Let me, sorry, I'll need to zoom in probably a little bit more. So for all gas, all all of gas station, fuel pumps and gas station, you still have all the requirements about the architectural treatments, the location of the pumps, um having, you know, the lighting on the pumps. And then we have the requirement that um that all, all fuel pumps um and convenience stores and gas stations, that they all will require a special land use permit. But you retain all of the same um architectural requirements. Then the good news would be that they'll come before, the applicant will come before you if there's additional requirements, given the specific location, if you see fit. Does that answer the question?
Uh, yeah, from your end, but I think that's the thing that we've got to do as well, since we uh enacted the moratorium. It was with the understanding that we needed to fix some other things that needed to be fixed in that category. And I was basically asking, do we need to put this here before we move forward with this? Uh so we need to um pull together a body to do just that, to act on what we needed to act upon uh during this period of uh moratorium uh to improve our um review and acceptance of application for gas stations. So I just wanted to know what all have you covered thus far.
Right, right. So they're required to have the design standards, and that's already extensive in Article Five. They are required to have the treatment of their um their canopies and the materials, their architectural materials. Um so so they're, they're having to go through and be required to present to you their building standard layout and, you know, the facade, how it's gonna look.
But that is in existence now, is it not?
Yes, that's the criteria for making sure. So now you'll go through this, now you will go through the public hearing process to address each one individually at the, at the given location.
Okay.
If if I may?
Yes, sir.
So so basically, what I'm hearing is that we're just eliminating the SLEP six. I mean, there would just be requirements for every single service station, period.
Exactly.
Right, so but as, but also, we still have that hard built-in criteria for look and feel of these service stations as well, so that they they will fit the community a lot better as well, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, if I may ask a question, Michelle, could you uh kind of narrow down the pages? Since this document is so massive, can you kind of narrow down the pages for me, just the gas station portion? I can't see from my screen just what pages you're on. It says one thirty-five. I don't know if that's one thirty-five or one eighty-five. I don't, I can't tell what that is.
Yes, and and for the benefit of those who are following, this is the um the redline copy. This is not the clean copy. That is, it's showing strike through and what's been inserted or deleted. And that's on page one thirty-five is where the the fuel pumps discussion.
Okay, all right.
Where we're sa- stating now that um um any applicant needs to go through the public hearing process.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? Then I have a couple of more questions. Uh you talked about uh me and the use regulation for towing, and I put another history to what?
So there's been issues with tow with tow trucks. Chris might want to describe the issue and I can, while he's explaining what that section was meant to address. I'll I'll bring it up on the.
So we have, so there's certain properties in the state of Stonecrest that are say they're towing, they're a towing business, but they're actually a junkyard business. So we're trying to kind of clean that up to specify. If you want to be a tow yard, then you can be a tow yard, but the vehicles there have to rotate out. They can't stay there. Unlike some other current uses where they just tow the vehicle and then vehicles never never leave, they never rotate, never move, they never go anywhere. They just stay there and become the junkyard. So if we're looking to try to clean that up and say, if you want to be a tow yard, then you have to follow these parameters to be a tow towing service.
That makes sense and I like it. Some of this I read in detail, some of it I skimmed. I've got to go back through the detail on that one.
It's, so we put it up, I can have it back up on the screen. It's really has to give, it's really meant to give code enforcement some ammunition as they're trying to keep it clean it up. So it was there's revising the language about storage and and screening of these vehicles.
Concerning that, does it have, I don't see, how many cars can they have on that lot or whatever at any given time? Is it a certain number of cars they could have?
We didn't specify, depending on I guess the the frequency of how often they go out. We were just more just trying to try to make sure there's a rotation of cars leaving instead of just staying there. Not into how many were actually allowed on the on the site. I came up with this with the help of code enforcement. I don't think Officer Parel is, he's on here. We kind of just trying to figure out how to just constantly have the the site kind of rotating. And we didn't get into specifics of how many cars there because depending on the size of the lot, it may change. So we didn't go in depth on that unless counsel wants to take a look. To put a hard cap on there as well if they if they want us to, but we didn't at the time.
And if I may, so that's one reason if if that we added to talk about make that record keeping. You know, code enforcement can't be everywhere at all times, but if there is a particular nuisance and they're not complying and, you know, they're they're not managing their site, then they will, they are required to have records to show when vehicles are brought in, when they're when they're turning around. So those are again, sort of ways so that if there is a nuisance site, then code enforcement has some some teeth that they can bring to, you know, to get a site into compliance.
Would those records be submitted to the city or just just be on their property for review?
Yeah, so I wouldn't recommend that they have to submit them to the city because you, you know, you'd be catching the good with the bad and you'd be having to spend some staff monitoring each set of those. It's really for, as I was saying, those who are might have become a nuisance and then code enforcement can say, you're required to show me your records. It would be more on demand or based on a complaint, complaint driven that the records would be requested. So they wouldn't be required along with business license. At least that's not what this is proposing because it changes every week. That would be a lot to have to keep track of. So we're trying to balance the effort to monitor with the desire to manage the nuisance.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good, good information. I had the same note with amending use regulation for personal care homes. And I know about the ones that I had brought up with the residency requirement for the owner. Was there something else?
We sent, I sent a memo that the city attorney I had drafted regarding regarding your your question, Councilman or Mayor Pro Tim Turner. I sent it at, I apologize for not being in this packet. It slipped my mind, but I sent it to this evening or I said this afternoon at 3:34. It is actually numbered, I'm trying to find it right now.
And and did Miss Alexander get a copy of that as well?
Yes, we did. Yes, it's actually, it's actually item number A.
It just didn't seem to be reflected in what we've been discussing.
Sure. Well, yeah, these were coming in, well, just to bring in the personal care home, if I I brought it up on the screen. The question about ownership. So we cleaned that up so that the business, the business, the owner of the business of the personal care home had to be a resident on site. The information that you received from city attorney said if you can establish a reasonable cause, a rationale for requiring the business owner to be the homeowner. Then city attorney's memo suggested that could be defensible if you spelled out very clearly a rationale. And then there was, so so that wasn't provided. We we got that just today. And I do, you know, that would be a question for city attorney to advise you and this body to communicate that rationale. Do you feel that that, you know, you have that, if you feel you can meet that standard of being, you know, that can be defended for having a rationale why the owner of the home, why the owner of the business has to own the home. Then then that, you know, you could proceed with some language. As it stands now, we left it on the more conservative statement to at least require that the business owner is occupying the personal care home as their own residence.
There's something that I've been asking for probably since the council been in operation. And that is that when we put together drafts, that we put dates on them. So I can know which draft I'm looking at. Now you've made that modification. And I'm not sure as to which draft I'm going to find it in, but I it would help me. I don't know about anyone else.
We actually only have published one. We have only published one draft.
Only published one?
Yes, sir.
But then we've modified it a few times, have we not?
Yeah, this hasn't changed since.
There's there's been no modifications at all, Mayor Pro Tim. Now, there's been no modifications. It's just been completely how it is once we posted on the city website and sent it out to council.
But when you make these changes to it, how do I know?
We'll we'll make, we'll put the date on, but no, there hasn't been any changes, so.
We would typically, if you make, if you want to amend any of that, we would do in a RADA sheet that would track any amendment to the proposed text as well as dating it. But I I think it causes confusion. I'm with you, Mayor Pro Tim. It's confusing to have multiple drafts. So I I prefer just to have one and then we we have the draft as it is, the proposed recommended changes.
But when we make changes to that one draft?
Well, that's what I'm saying. If you would direct staff to make changes, then we make a RADA sheet catching exactly how you're directing that. And and then we, you could adopt it with those changes. You'd say, we approve it. But we want section four amended to read blue, not green. And then we put that on the RADA sheet and then we can, that'll be part of your standing. And then it gets into the final version that gets adopted, that gets codified.
I'll talk to Stan.
And that is a cleaner way, cleaner way to track any any amendments to a proposed zoning ordinance.
I hear you.
So Mayor Pro Tim, if I can, I I think, so I want to address what you just said, and I have a question related to the topic. I think what Chris and Michelle are saying is that before they created a draft, everything we done, everything we did leading up to that was not technically a draft proposal. It was kind of the workings of putting it together. So we have changed things in conversation based on some of the recommendations that that they kind of presented like to us in those work sessions, but they weren't, they had not produced an official zoning update draft document. Those were just kind of things we were working through as a working session. So after all those working sessions ended, after they compiled all of what we were considering, probably as of the last meeting, which was December 3rd, if I'm not mistaken. Then they produced the document that said this is, now it includes everything we've already talked about. So I think that's why they're saying there hasn't been an update, there hasn't been any modifications because they didn't create the document until after all those working sessions ended.
And I'm looking at 350 pages. It gets to be a little bit daunting when 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 I have to look at those same 350 pages again and look for changes. So, okay, I understand what you're saying now.
So so if we move to this question about the homeowners, right, and if we decide, okay, we think we can have a rationale basis. So, Michelle, we we want you to change that and make it so that it is occupied by the homeowner. That would be the first modification that we've given them, which now means you would have a modified draft. So I think Michelle was saying she would actually modify it. She would create that RADA sheet and that kind of what would show the change. But that would be the first change that we would have proposed since all of the working sessions and all of, you know, all the conversation. That would be technically the first change to the document. Because the document right now is everything we've already talked about, kind of debated back and forth and and said, yes, consensus here, no consensus there. So I wanted to ask about this particular question, though, about this particular topic. Michelle, you mentioned that currently it says that the there has to be a an operator living on the premises, right? But that operator is not the homeowner. That's the way it's written now, right?
Correct. It's not required to be the homeowner, but the business owner has to reside on premise, correct?
So I want to make sure I'm understanding the distinction between the business owner, the operator, and the homeowner. So because they could, those could be three different people. So the the business, you're saying that it says the business owner has to be the occupant, not the homeowner.
Owner of the personal, yes, the owner of the personal care home. So it couldn't be, if I if I am running the personal care home, I can't hire my neighbor to go, you know, I can't hire somebody to be a manager and go there on site and and take care of those folks who are living in there. I, as the owner, as the name on the ownership of the business of the personal care home, I have to live there. That's the way. So it'll be through business license and coordination with planning and zoning review.
But I don't, but you, I'm saying I, but using your example, don't have to be the homeowner. I can own the business, but not own the home.
I could rent from, I could rent my property, I could rent this property. But I, but this is just like anyone could rent to live in a home because these are considered residential units. So just as a resident can rent their home, you know, be a tenant to someone where they live. This is the the same would affect the operating here, potentially. It could be either way. That does not require, the language currently does not require that.
Homeowner.
I own the home that I live in. It's it's not putting that burden on me that I own the home that I am living in and that I am running a personal care home and providing assistance to others for. Okay, you want me to share the screen? It's a simple sentence. I say it's a simple sentence. It's a short sentence. And if it needs to be modified because you're, you find the, you know, if the city attorney's findings dictate to change, then we would work with city attorney to change this language, you know, in a way that makes sense. But right now, I'm able to see that personal care homes in residential zonings must be occupied by the business owner. So that's, again, the intent was so you're not having some manager, some supervisor, some attendant who's living in the home, you know, and taking care of those, the folks who require the assistance. It's the person who actually owns the business whose name is on the business license to to get the personal care home facility permission.
And does that take away the the, I think the currently what we have are the, Chris, you can probably articulate this better. There's like different layers, different tiers. And the current one, so we eliminated all of that as well and just left it at personal care homes have to be occupied by the business owner. There's there's no longer, no longer the tiers, I think is what it was.
So the, we follow the language. I think this is the way DCA language runs, the state language runs. So that we, you still have something called a personal care facility, which would not typically be allowed in a residential district. And then you have a personal care home. And it's the personal care home that has those requirements, both of the distance, increasing the distance one from another, as well as the requirement of the, of, you know, the business owner residing in the home.
I don't believe that it was a distinction between a facility and a home. I thought that it was, there were tiers or levels within the personal care home. Chris, do you recall what I'm talking about?
Unfortunately, I don't, Councilwoman. I from my knowledge, it's always been by facility or home with the number of, a number of residents. If it's five or it was more five or more, then that would be considered a facility, I believe. So they changed it. Actually, I'll tell you that back now, it was between four and six previously. And then we changed it to to up to six and then anything over six would be a facility. So it was, it was always a home and then anything above that number of six was going to be a facility.
And Councilwoman Carver, this is Al Hunter. I definitely agree because Chris and I have been working extensively on these personal care, I think we have like six cases currently. In many of the cases, the business owner does not reside at the home. So it makes it, you know, a little challenging for us during code enforcement because we're dealing with as Ms. Alexander stated, like a manager or, you know, I guess a supervisor or something on site.
Right. And so I remember it was in my district, which is kind of why I remember because we asked her to gain some some documents that she technically didn't have to have because she fell into one tier instead of the other.
Oh, I think you mean the home occupation, where it's tier one and then tier two.
Right, right.
Yeah. I think that we've still left at the same. I think the, because the tier one is you're not having customer contact. And all personal care homes are going to be tier two home occupations because you have customer contact with the actual people that you're taking care of. So we, so we just left it as tier two. So all personal care homes in residential neighborhoods are always going to be tier two. I think the issue was was that language that where where it was misplaced in the previous update where it said homeowners in this section had to be, I mean, you you only could be a business if you were in this section. And I think there was some confusion where it was placed. It was placed in tier one, where it should have been in tier two. We're getting, we're getting rid of all of that. Well, when I say we're getting rid of all that, if if at council's decision to remove all that, we would just simply say anybody who wants to operate a personal care home, you have to own the business. Specifically, if council gives a specific reason for that.
So have, so have we, as it's presently presented now, we have cleared that up. We've moved that to the right section. So about the tiers. So there there is not going to be that confusion any longer as of this proposed document.
No, there's a, there's, we cleared that up. So again, it's currently written, it still allows for the the person who is operating the personal care home will still have to live there. But to Councilman, to Councilman Pro Turner, Mayor Pro Tim, Councilman Turner's concerns is that he wants to homeowner, who actually owns the home, to be the only person to operate the personal care home. So once council has established the specific reason for that, then staff will make the necessary adjustments to include that in the zoning ordinance.
So let me ask Al this, then. What what does that do for code enforcement? So your responsibility is if there's a violation at the home, it's to the homeowner, not to the business owner, right? In this, or not to the license holder, I guess, in this scenario. So if we have it where it is not connected to the homeowner, the, it has to only be, the operator only has to be the the business license holder in a sense. How does that affect code enforcement?
Well, it doesn't. It, because this is our philosophy. If I know someone is running a business out of their home. or commercial property, our staff looks at it from the perspective of, you know, hey, they're running a business, you know, we're going to reach out to Chris. Hey, Chris, do they have a license, or they, you know, or reach out to Sonya and Nikki on the licensing side? Check with Chris on the zoning side, say, hey, they're running a personal care, Chris knows I send him emails all the time. Hey, they run a personal care home, appears out of this location. My officers are going to go, of course, address them accordingly, you know, with usually a notice. Nine times out of ten, I can tell you right now, we have several that are not the homeowners that have personal care homes in the city. And Chris knows, you know, you know, we've discussed this over the last several months, we found this out, that they're not, they have been approved, or they were approved by the county or whatever. So they're, they're just basically renting the house. We have a couple of homes that are owned by corporations, hedge funds, that people rented, as Ms. Alexander stated. You know, in some cases, you're going to have the same individual. In some cases, you're going to have a corporation or, you know, a separate, you know, entity or individual, and then someone is running a business. And all my staff, including myself, are state certified adult care, I'm against adult tactic specialists. So that is, we actually helped shut down a couple of locations two years ago with Rockdale County, where people were doing exactly this. They were renting houses, they, they had a nurse that worked at Grady in south, the south Atlanta Hospital down Clayton County. They were sending them to their friends who would go rent houses, you know, that were vacant or, you know, up for rent. And then they would put these people in these houses, and, you know, they would have no food. DeCarter bought a lady some food probably about two years ago, because the lady did not have food when she went to do the inspection.
So Al, so, so this, so the way it's written now, though, does not solve that problem for us. Because the homeowner is still not required to be.
Well, yeah, I see what you're saying.
The home, so it doesn't solve that problem.
But it helps me better establish who is running that location. And can, you know, internally, from a policy standpoint, a procedure standpoint for my staff, we can always say, any personal care homes, we're sending a notice to the property owner, quote unquote, the business owner, you know, if they're residing there, yeah.
But, and if I may add, you won't be having those large LLCs, you know, stalking, you know, just putting in individuals randomly, you know, that'll be the business owner themselves. So right now, a large firm could buy a bunch of properties and have and, and put individuals to manage each site, and this would address that problem. This says you have to be the owner. If you're going to, you have to live there and you have to be the owner.
Yeah, and.
Right, well, that will solve, I think, that, that particular scenario for sure, if it's a, if it's a business by multiple homes. But I guess my, my concern still is that you address the homeowner, because that's who's ultimately responsible for the violations on the property.
Correct.
But the, the business owner is not, right? So you continue to communicate with the homeowner, but the business owner is the one violating the code. So how do we ensure that, without requiring the homeowner to be the person that occupies the home? How do we ensure that those code enforcement issues are satisfied timely? When you are allowing, when we are allowing a non-homeowner to run a business out of that property?
But it, it comes down to the same thing as if, as Chris stated, just like a home occupation. If someone wants to, to, you have, we have, you know, with your approvals, your council's approvals, y'all can tell us what y'all want in there, you know, or tell Chris, you know, what they want as other checklist, you know, or, or safeguards for that. I mean, I'm not saying that it's not going to be a daunting task. I can just tell you, Chris, Chris can tell you, I had Masha and I G I S department pull up every state licensed facility in Stonecrest, in every district that was a, I pulled it up probably a month or so ago. She just got us a spreadsheet last week, so we're literally going to every single check with their business license to make sure that every single one has a business license in the city that has an address associated with the city. Like over the next probably two months, because it's going to take us that long, it's that many.
But can I ask a question in regards to that?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
So what's the difference between a business owner who operates out of a home as opposed to one who operates out of a shopping center, and they're renting as opposed to buying? So we don't require shopping center owners to occupy the businesses within a shopping center. If we don't have rules in place or, or policy in place to treat all businesses the same, then we should. So a business who's renting in a mall area, for instance, or, or in a strip mall area, they have to be, they are responsible for whatever code violation that they, they produce. Same way I feel should happen with, you know, business owners who are in home. We shouldn't have to go after the homeowner, once that individual say that they are a business. It's unlike a renter, you know, it would be a different scenario, same to me. So we do not have that in place?
Well, well, Councilman Clayton, you've got a good point, and I agree with you. There shouldn't be a differentiation, but the, the big difference I can say, and Chris may be able to chime in better, is that a commercial business, shopping center is designed and zoned to be whatever those business entities can fit in that, that parameter. A residential neighborhood is zoned to be residential, period, not necessarily entailing personal care homes. Now, we understand that there is a affordability crisis in the country, you know, for affordable housing, so, you know, literally, you know, what, what that has done is transitioned, now that people have been kicked out of, you know, there's no more psychiatric hospital states per se, you know, within the, in the, in the state, that now they're, you know, they're saying, hey, let's go to these group home, communal living type arrangements and or personal care homes.
Well, I understand that, and I agree with you to a certain degree, but, you know, I don't agree with you that, that, you know, if, if, first, if we allow for personal care homes to be in residential district, we should no longer treat them as residents, that, that particular home.
Correct.
Should treat it as a business now, regardless of where it's at.
I disagree with that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think they should have the same rules as any business would have, you know, they shouldn't have, in other words, whatever code enforcement rules apply to non-owner business, uh, business owners. So if you don't own the property, but you own the business, whatever code violation, you don't, you're not really looking for the property owner, you're looking for the business owner.
I'm looking for both, I mean, I, I think if anything, your rules double, they don't, you don't eliminate one set. If anything, now you have residential rules and commercial rules that you have to apply both. But I wouldn't just, I would not just single them out to say now you're commercial.
I mean, what, what I'm, what I'm trying to do here, what I'm, what, in my mind, what I'm trying to do here is resolve an issue at a single point as opposed to making it more complex. So if, if, you know, I think if we, you know, just kind of like remove all the, you know, what ifs, and just, just focus on one single point. If you are a business owner, no matter where you're at in the city of Stonecrest, you are treated like any other business owners in respect to code enforcement. Not everything else, but in respect to code enforcement. Code enforcement should be able, in my opinion, to come into your, this resident, particularly when it's not the homeowner who running the business there, and to approach that business owner. Otherwise, we do have a problem. Then I would have to agree a hundred percent with Councilman George Turner to require the homeowners to be in every one of these businesses. If we can't do that, I mean, you know, it doesn't make sense, if we can't approach these business owners.
Well, let me ask you this, because aren't, aren't business owners, to your point, to your commercial point, I mean, if, if a business owner is leasing a space in a commercial plaza, and there's a code violation, code enforcement is still looking for the owner, because.
Can I interject, let me explain, so.
It's fair, go ahead.
Yeah, so we get a complaint at, you know, the Taco Bell, you know, whatever, you know, and so we go there. Yes, they're leasing that piece of property, or the McDonald's, or the Walmart, well, Walmart's.
The Bojangles, right.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, so, so we're going to, correct, we're going to go to the business owner, because they're in the responsible party and controlling custody as, as attorney, they're in control and custody of that property. So it goes with the same with the residential side. If someone, if a tenant's not cutting his grass or her grass, and they're renting, nine times out of ten, we want to talk to the tenant first, you know, because they're in control and custody of the property. Now, they may have a lease agreement with their landlord that says, because we get it all the time, hey, they're supposed to cut the grass, I'm not supposed to cut the grass, whatever. We don't get into the lease arrangement, we get into who has control and custody of the property on the time of our, our inspections and, and, and the issues. And then we also, in many cases, my staff, we send notices. If the property owners are different, whether it be on the commercial side, in the tenancy side, or residential or tenancy, we send it to both, you know, or we notify the property owner as well, so that he or she is aware that, hey, you know, you have a tenant who did not fix a window, there's trash, there's whatever the issue. I think for us with this, it just helps us, because many times, we, my staff goes to those locations, they do not get a straight answer, I promise you, because I'm just being honest. A lot of these things, you're talking about five thousand dollars a month, that they will have eight people in a room in, in four bedroom house, five hundred dollars a person a month. And I mean, I can, you know, and next thing you know, they're making three, four thousand dollars off of mortgage, that's a thousand. The landlord doesn't know that this person has rented, that's what happened. The person was renting a house from a company, as, as Michelle stated, from Havenbrook Homes. The people didn't even know, when we called Havenbrook Homes to tell them that, hey, do you know this person? They're like, yeah, that's the person that leased our house. I said, well, just FYI, they're wanted by Rockdale County for all these charges. And they were like, what are you talking about? I said, well, they rented some houses here as well, and they're putting people in them illegally. And then they're taking all their money. And they were like, oh, no, we, you know, and they had to get involved on their end, because they didn't know, because they're just renting, you know, they're just like, hey, we just rented a house out, you know, to ABC. So I think some kind of parameter, whatever those may be, will help all, myself, will help Chris, you know, in, in our enforcement efforts. Without it right now, I go to a door, nine times out of ten, they're not going to answer. If they do answer, they're like, I don't know who the manager is or the supervisor, so we're back to, to your point, Councilman Clayton and everyone else, we're back to going back to the property owner, because that's the only person we can go after at that point.
Right, except for, in, in this case, and, you know, I hope you can hear, hear, you know, what I'm, I'm getting after.
Yeah.
It, it is, in this case, we're talking about just removing all of that, what you just said. Have a single source for who you go after, in the case of personal care facilities. I'm not talking about everything else, but what we're talking, this subject is about personal care. So where you have a personal care facility, if we go with the outline plan, this would allow for a owner, one owner, to have possession of one home, period. That's, he, that person couldn't have another home, a second home, a third home, even though that homeowner, the homeowner could have multiple homes in the city of Stonecrest.
I see.
But the business owner could only reside in one of those, not two, but one. So if we, whatever we do, need to do in our code enforcement ordinance or business license issuance, if we cannot reach the business owner, then we can just simply, you know, pull the license back. You know, so we, we have some force behind this, without having to go after homeowner, or try to find somebody in New Jersey, or in the, in the Bah, the Bahamas somewhere, or, you know, Cayman Islands, with all these names and stuff going on. We go to the point of contact, the person who's actually running that business, who has a business license with the city of Stonecrest, and we shut them down if they don't, you know, you know, conform to our court enforcement.
Let me say this, we have a lot more to cover in this cat, well, with the zoning update. And we have clearly identified this is an area that needs to be worked on some more. And I'm sorry, I just got some information this evening, afternoon, rather, that I need to take a look at, as well as the rest of council, before we can render our opinion on this particular item. So if we can just put a pin in this one to come back to through another meeting, and it's going to take some more meetings before we can get, before we're ready to move on with this. I hate to say that, but if we can move on with other items that Michelle has to present. But know that this is an item that we have got to fix. And that is the residential requirement for the owners of personal care homes.
And, and, and the good news is, it's a pretty quick, quick decision, frankly. It's either you accept what the, the city attorney's expression of how you you communicate your rationale, then go, then, then you will make, then you will direct staff that you're changing it to the homeowner must be the business owner and live there, or you leave it as is. So, I mean, you have the rationale from city attorney, it's.
I don't want, I don't want to cut anyone short, but I just don't want us to get bogged down on this one item when we have so many.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, it's just indicating how, yeah, it's already pretty defined, and it was great to get that feedback from city attorney's office.
Well, Michelle, I want to mention to you, though, I mean, it says, as long as we can provide rationale, well, what in the heck does that mean? I mean, rationale, what are the parameters of rationale? What should we include to make sure that that's something they can defend? Who provides that rationale? Is it something that has to be provided at each application? Is it something that's provided in general? Do you write the general rationale? I mean, so that's not, it's not as simple as you're trying to.
Well, if we have. The rationale would have to be from, you, you all have to define what, what you see as the benefit.
Yeah, we're going to have to set that policy.
Overall.
It's going to take a lot more discussion to make that happen. And like I said, I, I don't want us to get bogged down on it to the point that we cannot move forward.
Right, right.
The other items, and I hope I'm not offending anyone by moving on. But we see where there's a problem, we see it's got to be fixed, so we can fix it. But to fix it right here and right now, I think we are really consuming a lot of time that we need to put some other things on the table for consideration. So if we can move on.
If you have other questions for us?
I mean, that was not the extent of your presentation, was it?
Yes, we, we have gone through all of the key substantive issues, things that we corrected and made and got your blessing to prepare this draft. So we've reviewed those with you in December third and January thirteenth, and we walked through those key items again. So we're here to answer questions. All we did was translate what you said yes to in, in fixing and updating the code. We, we translated that into the ordinance, so that's what you've had available. So if you had other, other questions?
Okay. Question.
I'm happy to discuss the community council. Let me bring up the memo we talked through on that. So you got, are you speaking because of the notice that was distributed today?
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, but remember, we, we didn't get it this afternoon, so it.
What we provided, what we provided, sorry, one moment, I'm trying to bring up my, my, my memo. I love a technical memo, tries to keep it short and useful and handy. Let me bring up the community council memo. So we provided in January, let me share my screen again, if I may. Let's see, let me select. So what we talked about in January, on the January thirteenth meeting, we, we, you had a different opinions of whether to have one council or to have several councils. The city attorney at the time gave the opinion that, given the function and purpose, and especially if you all are appointing a community council, that it would likely have to follow the zoning procedures law and have public hearings and all of the similar procedures as your planning commission. And then as part of that discussion, there was the question of, well, how is it different? How is a community council different from a planning commission? So given those, all of those details, the discussion deserves dedicated attention. And what we did was prepare a memo that we distributed to you about all the steps that really need to happen. And we provided the example language, which is from DeKalb County. And you'd still have to decide the bylaws, and so that would take a bit of deliberation. You'd also need the administrative instructions and then also procedures for managing all that and your internal procedures. And then to move forward with amending your code to add exactly however it is that you all land regarding that matter, given that it was, it's, it's a bit more of an undertaking. So we just provided some direction for establishing, maybe, you know, your discussions for how you want to move forward with that particular item. What you got from city attorney, if I read it correctly, did support that it's likely your, your appointing of a council that serves these, these this function essentially as a planning commission, very similar, it would have to comply with zoning law. So it did, we did not include any changes, we did not include it in the zoning ordinance, given this discussion at the time. And instead, we provided you some, basically a work plan for addressing it as an independent topic.
Michelle, do you have any examples of, of bylaws that we can look at that you can submit to us?
I would, I would probably just start with DeKalb County's bylaws. Uh, and I'm happy to, you know, obtain them for you. They're not perfect, you know, they, because they're addressed to have five different councils that are neighborhood based. Excuse me.
I understand, but whatever example you might have, I would like to have a copy.
Yes, sir, happily.
Thank you.
So Michelle, you're, you all are recommending that we do not move forward with the community council at this time, but if there's something. But to spend some dedicated time looking into it and then come back with. And a change to the zoning ordinance?
Yes, if you decide that that's the way to go, because, um, given city attorney's advice about that. It will, you know, the, the body would have to follow zoning procedures law to not be vulnerable and to, to make sure, you know, any of the. Um, recommendations, um, are treated as they, as they need to be. Um, so given that it seems like a dedicated item and we've armed Chris Wheeler with, um, with those step by step. Um, that, you know, you could. Address the questions. And again, how do you want to define it by geography? There's different questions about that, 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 um, we recommend you dedicate time specific to that. So we do not have any changes. There's nothing in the draft that addresses trying to, um, insert a council. Um, a community council system.
Uh, let me just say, uh, one thing, uh, you mentioned about. The indecision as to whether they have one council or multiple councils. I think that was driven by comments that the, uh, attorney made. And that is that if you go with just one council, it mirrors the. Um, planning board too much. Uh, but if there's a way it can be structured such that it does not mirror the planning, uh, commission. Then, uh, my opinion is that one. Uh, community council would function. I think adequately. If that could be done without, uh, having any type of semblance of. Duplicating the planning commission. Just comment. Anyone else?
On, on this topic or a different topic?
Well, if you finish with the idea of a planning, uh, I'm sorry, of a community council. And as stated, we have got to decide whether that we want to move forward with it now or later. Not at all. So that's in our hands to, uh, act on that. And I can. Personally, I can wait on when they relay an opinion on that. Because I don't see a real urgency, although. I don't want to wait too long. Just personally. Anyone else with opinions on? Community council?
I'd like to see the information. Chris, you did say you sent us some information on that today, am I correct?
Uh, yes, so I sent you guys the memo, uh, the Winston's, uh, that, uh, sent, I sent it at three thirty, uh, three thirty, four P M. This afternoon, I can resend again just, uh, just to have it at the top of your list if you want me to.
Uh, I'm, I'm fine. I just need to look at it. I just have an opportunity to take a look at it, but thank you. I appreciate it.
I know we had some concerns, Mr. Wheeler, about how you sent stuff to us in the past and. It didn't quite always get to us, you still.
I typed everybody's name in, uh, individually, did not do city council, I typed in everybody's name individually. Um, I actually have a draft up right now, just in case somehow somebody didn't receive it. So just let me know and I'll send it again.
Great, thanks, sir. Councilman Clayton, you were ready to move on to another question?
Well, yeah, still within the same, uh, you know, with Michelle. You know, um, there was a, I don't know if you guys addressed this, um, in this, this version, but since you say you didn't change anything, I'm assuming that it was not addressed. Which was a concern that I got and that was brought to my attention in regards to requiring a slump. In the, in the industrial zone. That, you know, that whether or not that was legal or, uh, that we can legally actually ask for a slump. E- even though a business is in the industrial zone, uh, simply because of their, you know. The distance they, that they are from a residential area.
Sure, so, um, it is included in, in this, in the draft as, as, as directed that. Several of the very intense uses that are currently allowed in the M, in the light industrial. Um, there's several uses that are very intense and, um, those uses. Have, have now what we call a location criteria, you're at, you're not changing the zoning. But you're adding location criteria. To a zoning district. And in this case, the criteria says if you are adjacent to residential. Um, you, and you, and you want this intense use. Whether it's, uh. Um, you know, recycling facility or whether it's, you know, you know, range of these more intense uses. You have to get a special land use permit so you can show to the council. How you are meeting and mitigating these intense uses when you are adjacent to a residential property. And that was in response to, um, an initial discussion about, well, let's just move. These intense uses, don't call them light industrial, let's move those, a couple of, you know, several of those uses and put them into the heavy industrial. And given you have these industrial parks and some places that, that it does make sense. We, we, we focused in on, well, what is the issue? What are we trying to solve? And what you're trying to solve is that residents are not impacted. We're trying to avoid that residential uses are, you know, avoid them being impacted by these very intense industrial uses. And so the special land use permit is perfect. It gives you, it says the seem, this is likely, this is possible that it's the right place. But let's go through the public hearing process and let's get the right size buffers and let's get the right size mitigation. And not all plants are going to be, um, not all facilities are created equal. Some will have very specialized. Ways to mitigate the environmental impact or noise impact and others. May not be sophisticated. So great, bring it all before council so that it goes to the public hearing. As a legal matter, I'm going to defer to city attorney. I've seen. Location criteria used pretty regularly, especially if it's residential. And in fact, we thought it would be, um, burdensome to just take out those uses. From light industrial, you know, cart lodge, just completely. Take them out, that's the wrong term, but take them out completely. Instead, let's just say, where is the problem? The problem is when it's next to residential.
Right.
Winston has any comments about the legal?
Well, yeah, before then, but no, and just to be certain, I mean, just to be clear. This was not an initial concern of mine, I, you know, what we talked through. Originally was fine with me, but this was brought to my attention separately and after the fight. And one of the things that was brought to my attention was there is a line. That is in our charter that addresses this issue somewhat. And that's, that's what I'm really trying to clear up.
I'm sorry.
You know, okay, so which, and that was that the city council should not have the power to require special land and use permits. Special exceptions or special administrative permits for the industrial use of properties within. An industrial use zoning district. So that's, that's what I just wanted to clear that up and make certain that we was within.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, that is a Winston question, um, that the charter would override the zoning authority seems, um.
Yeah, I know, that, that's why I want it cleared up.
I'm not an attorney, I am not an attorney, so I'm sorry, I can't be more useful on that.
Uh, I, I could take a look at that and. And, and try to reconcile that, but sometimes you try to harmonize those provisions. And not read it to be in conflict, but if it's, if, but if there is a conflict, then clearly the charter prevails.
Okay, I just, just wanted some clarity on it, it, you know, honestly, you know, I'm good either way, but I just want to make certain that as we move forward and we're not. Causing conflict or creating conflict, you know, um, either by omission or just, you know. Or e- especially by omission, let's leave it at that.
I have a question about that and I think that that's obviously important for us to understand if the charter does say that. Where is it? First of all, we need to make sure Winston is aware of, uh, where it is and read in its full context, because that obviously makes a big difference. On whether or not this recommendation, um, is sustainable.
Yeah, so it's a section of one oh three. Line one seventy-five, one seventy-six, one seventy-seven, and one seventy-eight, I could put it in the, uh, comments.
Is that in the C I D?
Uh, no, it's not, uh, I, it's, um. I don't, it's under powers and, and cons- powers and construction.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think we definitely need to take a look at that because one, if we feel like that is conflicting with, um. The route that we'd like to take to ensure that our community is protected from. These intense uses being adjacent to our residential areas, then we need to make a home rule change. To the charter so that we can make the change we need to the zoning code that will protect our residents and not hide behind. Oh, sorry, we can't do it because the charter says we can't.
And I, and I agree with you a hundred percent on that, and that's why I wanted to just make certain that, you know, this is not something that, you know, kind of fall off the radar. And we unknowingly create an issue that we have to resolve sometime down the road. Whereas if we introduce the issue now. And, you know, we can provide some clarity and some direction on it, then we can go ahead and do that. Before we, as a council, vote to adopt the, a new zoning. So it just makes sense to, you know, if there's an issue to point out now as opposed to after the fight. So, but yes, I'm with not, you know, like I say, I, the original argument was brought about by me. Technically, to, to provide this distance between residential or come up with some way to, to, to make certain that our residential. Um, and our, if you recall, and our, um. Industrial don't, uh, encroach each other upon each other. So we wanted to make certain that, you know, residential could remain residential in a peaceful manner. And industrial will be able to thrive as an industrial. And you, as you, if you recall, I, you know, I suggested that, you know, we create a larger boundary or, or border. Or whatever we need to do to just make certain that these things are, you know, that they can. Operate equally but very separate.
Right, well, I'll tell you what, it's probably a lot easier, um, or shorter of a process. Uh, to, Michelle, what you thought might have been a heavy lift, um. To move those uses, that, that may be a lighter lift than amending or charter. So if it's charter says that you can't, that we, not that we can't change the charter, but, um. It, it's a little bit more of a process than what, than what you could do, which is backspace and go into that use and move the use. Like we had kind of originally, I talked about, um. Or at least that, because to Councilman Clan's point, I think my suggestion in our conversations was that you take those intense uses out of light industrial. And put them into heavy industrial, um, so that because we have the, the industrial parks where, um, they're more appropriately suited for. So it would, it's probably a lot easier to take that route. Unfortunately, that kind of. Does away with, um, your recommendation of, um, just putting a location kind of restriction there. But that is a, that is a lighter lift than a charter amendment. Um, so.
Yeah.
In a way, but maybe not, because when you start talking about changing uses and stuff where you got businesses that already exist. With those uses, that might be a, 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 a legal issue that I don't know where that would land us. Uh, but you know, you know, but it is great that we are able to ta- to tackle this before we have problems. But there are obviously some problems like, you know, with the Metro Green issue and certain other issues where, you know. Um, you know, if we had some sort of boundary set up to make certain that certain type of entries doesn't butt up to a, a residential area. Then, you know, or, or vice versa, that residential areas are not moved into industrial areas. So, you know, so we have to, you know, really work on that.
Right, well, but I mean, if we can't provide a slump, then, um, I mean, that's the most secure way to do that. If, if a slump can't be, can't be, um. Issued, then, you know, just extending buffers and whatnot is not, is not a solid enough solution.
Uh, uh, I'm not. Buffer thing is, is a concern that I have anyway, and again, the Metro Green is a perfect example of that. There are companies. Or businesses that have pollutants that can travel, uh, further than those buffers. So we have to ensure that even with those buffers or whatever we. Place these businesses, they're in the area that even if they're emitting some type of chemicals in the air, it will not affect the communities, no matter where they are. So they should be in a. Their own isolated area, so nowhere near a, a residential district. Because that's the problem now causing the situations with our, our constituents now. So those things should be in consideration.
I agree with you a hundred percent, Councilman Rob Tur. You're exactly right, because the buffer shouldn't just be land based only, it should be air based, you name it. Whatever it requires to keep our community safe. So yes, I'm, I'm a hundred percent with you.
And I am too, but I think that, that deserves, that deserves our immediate attention.
Okay, so we're going to get the alternative, give us an opinion on, uh, what the, uh, charter says. Which we're trying to do here in addition.
Not in the, um, mini code.
Yeah, I, I do apologize. I mean, this was just brought to my attention. Had I known about it earlier, I would have definitely brought it up earlier.
Now, I, I'd heard it as well and, um. This is, this is not totally new. Okay, other comment?
We didn't hear that part.
I said, it's new to Michelle. George said it wasn't new to him.
Yeah, that one, one part of the. The other part of the code is pretty unusual.
Yeah.
Authority, it's power to zone. So it's odd.
Okay, any other questions on this particular topic? All right. What else we have from Michelle? Well, folks, that was a big document and we're trying to get it to the point of first read.
Well, I, I, I mean, I know you, um, Mayor Pro Ten pushed us along with the personal care homes, but I just. I just really don't want, you know, Stonecrest to turn into, um. The market for real estate. Uh, brokers and connoisseurs to buy up, uh, properties and then, you know, start to, and I know we have the distance piece. But I just don't want that to be something that, you know, we're known for, that we're the. Personal care home city of the world, which I know there are needs for personal care homes. Hear me clearly, I do understand that. And that's not what I'm saying. We're in the business of being in the business of being in business. However, comma. We have to, we have to safeguard what it is that, you know, that we need to safeguard. And I think. I'd rather for us to go slowly than to have to rush back to make some changes. So I, I still think that there's a. A great deal of conversation that still needs to take place because it just. It really concerns me, business owner versus homeowner. And then one plays against the other and nothing is code enforceable. I'm just concerned. So there you have it.
I, I do agree with you and if I moved us on too fast, we can revisit that. It's just that I know it's going to take a lot of more discussion before we come to a, a consensus on it. And, uh, to give you a little background on it, I'd say ten, fifteen years ago, South DeKalb County. Was just saturated. With personal care homes. And, uh, the cap kind of tried to give a handle on it. And some of the suggestion that we bring forth tonight, a suggestion that they put on the table that didn't necessarily pass. But still, there was an effort to try to, uh, get a handle on it. And the neighbors, um, particularly the HOAs are really, really concerned and they have. Cried to the cap county and anyone who would listen. To try to get a handle on the personal care homes. Because they wind up being a commercial operation in neighborhoods. That are in many cases out of control. And in other cases, they are exactly what the neighborhood needs and you don't even know that they are there. That is the way they were intended to be operated, but anyone can mess up a good thing. And we've had some issues. In the South DeKalb area for quite some time. So we need to fix it for Stonecrest. And, uh, again, if you want to reopen it, I, I'm, that's what we're here for. I was just suggesting that if we need to, they vote sometimes specifically to that issue. Then we can set aside some time to do just that, or we can do it right here, right now.
No, I think the set aside time is, 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 is good.
Okay. All right, other concerns?
And hopefully Mayor Pro Ten, we can set aside that time quickly, um, but given the attorney enough time to research the, the most recent issue. Hopefully we can kind of discuss all three of those things, or three of these things at that dedicated time. To make sure that we do, you know, come to a solution so we can get the zoning update. Completed. You know, and I don't, I'm not trying to rush it, but. Um, I think that we've gotten to a point where we understand now that we there are like three things that we've really got to figure out what the consensus is and how to move forward with it. The community council being one of them, the homeowner versus, um. Occupy, uh, by business license, um. Owner, I guess, um, and then now this. Slup or no slump for. Intense industrial, light industrial use. I mean, I think. I think we've gotten at least, which is good, you know, we. I think we've gotten at least, which is good, you know, we've narrowed down now three things versus thirteen things that we need to spend more time with. But if we could do that all in one meeting, so to give us, give the attorney enough time to prepare um kind of what we need to know about the research on that slump issue. And then discuss the other two at the same time, and we dedicate like we did that one last work session where it was just for this topic, we can knock all three of those out at one time.
Sounds good. Sounds real good. Uh Michelle, I have another uh note that I made here. And uh it really is not for you, it's for Ms. Reed. Are you there? Madam City Clerk.
I'm here.
Muni Code. Where do we stand?
I believe Chris and I were still working on getting all the stuff to dump.
The reason I I I bring that up because uh that is the note on here as well, and that is integrated in the ordinance uh to adopt. I mean, that adopted by the uh city sensing corporation. And we stopped at two thousand eighteen. And we've been at a standstill uh 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 whole since you did this. And I was told that we might have it ready about two months ago. Now, I was just curious to know if that's something the council needs to do to make this happen? Uh where do we stand?
Um you wouldn't need to do anything. Um we can give you guys an update at the uh council meeting if you'd like. Or we can just the email, just see where we are with that.
An email would be good.
Okay.
Okay, and 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 this is in the hands of a contractor to finish this out, and we just need to get them the information?
Yes, I just don't want to duplicate information that we give them. So I'm going to make sure that they have what we sent them last. Um I believe Chris tried to send them something and it came back and there was some confusion there, but let me pull those emails and then I'll have an update in the next, probably by the end of this week.
Okay, I turn to you because you were the last one to give us an update. So um Mr. Wheeler, that's going to be on you to drive this uh Ms. Reed.
Um Ms. Reed is the primary account holder, because anytime I try to contact Muni Code, they say they have to speak to the account holder. So I've 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 done that. I've gone down that road with them before, so.
Follows in the court.
It's just uh I I love Muni Code. It's very convenient, but when it cuts off at two thousand eighteen and we're in twenty twenty one, it kind of leaves us a little short, so to speak. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then um Michelle, you want to summarize, wrap us up?
Well, um what you have um before you is a document that addresses a lot of the concerns that you and members of your community voiced. Um the sooner you can get it in place, the sooner you your residents and um business owners will be protected from some of the um impacts that have have caused concern. And looking forward to hearing from Winston on these um last outstanding i- items. And we're grateful for um all of this opportunity to work with you um crafting the code. And just don't hesitate to call um in between. And um if you have questions for us, we're we're at your service.
What I hear you say is that you're trying to get us ready for the first read. Uh and 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 I read something that someone said there might only be a need for one read.
Yes, so we're getting ready for the reading. Yeah, the city attorney's office said actually for the zoning that only a reading is required um as opposed to um two reads, two readings.
Is that for zoning cases or for a change in the zoning?
For zoning matters, it said, it says the um the language that was forwarded to me from city attorney's office. Um I can, we can forward it um Chris, what we got from, I think it was Danielle.
Okay.
Clarifying.
Well, the way I was reading it, but I remember when we changed it uh for zoning hearings only single matters from two reads to one read. Uh but this is a change in the zoning code. So I just wanted to make sure that uh what I was hearing is correct.
Right, better better to be sure. Yeah, no, we'll triple check. Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, now, thank you.
Mayor Proten, would it would this be similar to a tax amendment? I mean, it's more than, it's like a huge tax amendment, but
Yes, it's a tax amendment.
So we only do one read for tax amendments?
That was the that was the rendering from your city attorney's office?
Chris, we only do one for Timon?
Uh we've done it for, we've done two reads um from my understanding. I mean, as for as the last couple of times, we we updated, we've done two reads. So uh the the memo that the city attorney sent was uh was new information to me, but we've always done two from my understanding.
So can Attorney Denmark, can can you make sure that we under, we all understand the distinction between a tax amendment requiring two reads versus a zoning matter, quote unquote, what we consider to be a zoning case? Um and sometimes this is real, this is why it's sometimes really hard when other people write what we ask them to create, because we changed that with the intention to just be for the zoning cases, not zoning explicitly, you know, not just zoning across the board. Now, it wasn't supposed to be that broad, and sometimes that's the issue with other people writing what you say. Um I think Councilman George Turner, we we've experienced that on a number of occasions, um including the personal care home change. Was interpreted differently than what we have requested. Um but we have, and I know you've always said, Attorney Denmark, that just because you practice something doesn't mean that's what's written. Um but we have done two reads for text amendments and only one, quote unquote, for zoning cases. So it's our impression. And I think I would rather be on the safe side and do two reads, um because that was the intention of that change. Um but if you will have at least Danielle or somebody just triple check the distinction between the two. Um because that that leaves me, at least personally, a little uncomfortable.
Sure, I I I I certainly will. Um I I I'll say this, though, um uh Danielle Matricardi is about as bright as a attorney as I've met in twenty five years of practicing law. And so if if she said it, then it's thoroughly researched and she's right. But um that being said, um I I'd have, I I'm happy to um give the council the insurance that you need. So we will look at it, and even if you only have to do one and you want to do two, that's fine. But um but but Danielle's looked at it and she rendered an opinion and um and I I think she's correct. But um we will share the research and 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 let you know um um that I've confirmed that that she's correct. And then we can do one or two as the council um likes.
And I don't disagree with you, Attorney Denmark, by no stretch of the imagination. You know, I have a special place in my heart for Danielle. Um but it it is, it's it's just difficult, like I said, when when you ask for something and then it's interpreted differently and then it ends up being in a record, and you're like, that's not what we asked for. Um so and especially because even with Chris saying that we have actually done two reads, um it's obviously not the interpretation of staff either. So if because Danielle is awesome, um and she's probably not incorrect, we need to make that change wherever that change needs to be so that it is clear that that was intended for zoning cases and not for anything and everything related to planning and zoning.
Absolutely. Got you covered, and we'll take care of it.
Or is that in the code?
Um I I'm 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 actually not looking at it, so I I I can't answer that as I sit here.
Okay, so we just, if it is a code change, then we want to make sure we capture that in this rendition of the code update. If it's just a resolution, then we can change that and maybe Mayor Proten, we can attempt to add that to a an agenda very quickly um to clear that out. But if it's a code, if it's in the code incorrectly, then I'd like for Michelle or Chris or somebody on that team to make sure that we have that straight in the code.
Well, I had a professor, you said, always say that there are no right answers for wrong questions. So we have to ask the right question. So I'm need to make sure that she would ask the right question. Um I I I do have another concern, Michelle.
Yes, sir.
Um I know we're trying to get this done as uh one change, but if we choose to go line item, we can probably, well, I guess that's a decision for council. If we just want to take these items one at a time and um vote them up or down, that's which way we're going to go. I I think I withdraw that. That's a decision for council.
Yeah, and I would just um um hearken back to the, I call it the sort of the cheat sheet. Why we work so hard to get consensus from you all so that you were, you know, at a comfortable place except for these two or three items that we are recommending you take out separately, like the community council.
Yeah. Okay. If there's nothing else, let me introduce a couple of other items before we close out. One of which is um uh Ken Hildebrand is gone.
He is.
Okay, when it comes to road improvements, uh we have to go back to an old proposal, and that is the widening and improvement of the Panola Road from Farrington all the way down to Brownsville. That was a proposal with DOT in the cap county uh to make that happen, and it was it was a rather costly undertaking. And that was going on just prior to the city uh becoming incorporated. And when that happened, the road, since it is in city limits, the cap county began to move away from that project. And the city of Stonecrest, if we were to take it on, would probably consume uh half, if not even greater than half of our splotch proceeds. And um we are having to take another look at it. But since then, we've received communication from the cap county uh indicating that if we don't proceed with this particular project, uh it could jeopardize uh future funding. To put it into my words. Uh and now they want to meet with us to talk about looking, they want to look, they want to meet with us to talk about looking at this project again. And I'm not sure if it will require the same input from the city as we once thought. So um I believe it would fall on the mayor and uh whomever uh else would be accompanying the mayor instead of a meeting with the cap county to talk about it. So just to bring that to your attention, I believe council all received a letter from our district commissioner in reference to that. So you have comments on it? Uh what are your thoughts?
Fair from them. I definitely have comments on it. Um as it sits mainly in my district, um I think it's mainly yours and mine. I think it's a little bit of Rob, too. No, Rob might have, you may have the other DOT project as the bridge. So I think this one is just George and I. Um so yeah, I've got a lot to say about it. Um I don't want to take too long, but I do think that we most certainly need to be in those discussions. Um I first of all, we have, over the last few years since that project came up, um constantly communicated with our constituents um that that we were going to participate in this project. And even went as far as to have DOT come to several meetings, DOT held their own. And then we also invited them to meetings to explain the project, kind of give timelines um and and understanding some of the residential concern and the impact. Um so I don't recall uh us deciding explicitly that we were just going to be out of the business all the way. I do recall that there were discussions about putting money in for design um and and acquisition. Um and then we did decide to do something. Um I do remember that 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 there was um quite a bit of um, I guess, a reaction from the county kind of saying, oh, we were going to participate, but now it's all Stonecrest, so here you go. Um we obviously decided, we we thought that we could not afford the entire project. Um it would take most or all of our splotch. Um disheartened to hear that it kind of went from here, you take it, to no, we won't, and then just kind of left it there. So I am, but but I am excited to to see that there's room for a continued discussion about where we can maybe meet in the middle. Um I understand that now all the money is due at one time. Um so because the cost can be spread over multiple years, we may be able to um financially participate in this project. I think it would be, just to have a general conversation about it, I think it would be um a a disservice to our constituents if we did not make as much of an attempt as we possibly could to come to an agreement between the county and the city and DOT to see this project through. There's such an impact for not just District Three and Four, but I mean, Panola Road obviously takes you to many different areas of the city. Um and the residents in that community, in in that area, Panola Mills, um Windsor Crossing. Um if you go down a little further, um there's just so much of an impact there, the church, Ausley United Methodist there, that this project could really make a huge difference. And to hear that if we continue just to take this stance, we've taken as no, the project came before the city was formed, so we won't do it. And then the county taking the stance of, well, now you are a city, so you take it. If we continue with that kind of tug of war, um we do our constituents a disservice. We lose the ability to have this funding in the future, uh or future funding, rather, for for similar projects. Um and we just, we just literally leave our our constituents hanging. Um so I really, I really would encourage us to at least have this conversation with the county again. And when I say us, I mean us, I mean include the the governing authority in those conversations. Not for those conversations to be had on our behalf, but that we actively participate in those so that we can come up with what's a good solution um between the county and the city for our residents that are most impacted in that area. But keeping in mind uh that Panola Road is the first exit into the city. Um and so to um lighten up the load on Panola Road right there to drive economic development, as everyone knows that that's kind of um a lot of the fuel behind a lot of the fire that we have in Stonecrest. Uh it would just be insane to me to just continue to throw our hands up at it.
The comments?
Yeah, I I I definitely have some compliments, comments on that. A little bit of background, you know, we all, except for Councilwoman Grimes, who was not a council member at the time, was involved in discussions. Uh some which we probably can't talk about here, the specifics of us beca- because we was in executive session on at least two, maybe three occasions where we went over to some, I mean, to a huge uh amount of details into the project. I think at one point in one of those meetings, we actually had a representative from the cap county bring a map and spread the map over over the conference table and just go point by point to what the uh the uh project entail, which is 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 of critical importance, because, you know, if we're going to spend you know, seven or eight or nine million dollars on a single project, then our constituents should certainly know what what it is that they're going to get for that kind of money as opposed to where else that money could be used and get a bigger bang for the buck possibly. But what part of what we concluded, we concluded uh at that po- particular point in time as a council, because we were all there together uh that we agreed to, I think it was, you know, it was a smaller amount. And I I don't know if I could probably mention that amount since it was done in um executive session, but it was a much smaller amount than the the seven or eight or nine million, you know, or going halfway or any anything like that. So we did discuss this to some some degree. Since then, you know, you know, a- and also that there was varying um there were divisions of that particular project, you know, there was a, there was like different pieces of that puzzle, project puzzle. Part of it included areas above I twenty, above meaning towards Covenant Highway. Part of it included areas at I twenty. Then other parts of it uh included areas of, I think for maybe a mile or two miles down the road, it included cutting a new street in the neighborhood, some bike trails on either side of the street, putting in a divider up and down uh Panola Road on the one side, on the um the south side of Panola Road, I believe, of uh I twenty. But also, since then, we've discovered that there is another project that um that Dot is is looking at, and that and I think is all but approved, is the diamond that would go in at uh Panola Road, which is not a part of this project, it's a whole separate project uh that would actually, you know, do some of the same things or at least contribute to, not it's not, it's not the same, but it would contribute to traffic easement along Panola Road, getting on and off of expressway, which is part of, the bigger part of the problem is 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 a bottleneck to get on and off that expressway right there at uh Panola and I twenty. And so the rest of the project is mostly, you know, it's 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 good to have, without a doubt, you know, if you add it, you know, sidewalks and if you added a a bike trail on one side of the road, and if you cut another um a whole another street into a community uh so that you can align the traffic lights. I mean, all that is great to have. Uh, so that you can align the traffic lights. I mean, all that is great to have, but you know, just when you look at the totality of the project. And then you weigh that against, you know, our already stressed. Uh, splotch monies, then you know, it's something that we certainly have to consider because the first part of this meeting. If you guys recall was talking about, you know, uh, you know, uh. Basically broadening the um, the uh, the data that we collected from Stan Techs or whatever the company name. As far as which road we should pave first. And so when we, when we'd saying that, look, that's not broad enough, we need to pave some of these other roads. But now we're saying, not only do we need to pave some other roads and because we can incur death. We can go ahead and do Panola Road too, when you know, the only reason, the only reason. That the county backed down off of this project was because Stonecrest became a city. Other than that, the project would have probably been completed by now. And as far as, you know, us being in jeopardy of monies, I've heard that argument before as we, we all did, I think, you know. Uh, in one of the executive sessions and what we found out was that actually. Uh, Stonecrest didn't apply for any of that money. So when a, whatever entity, government entity applied for it, that government entity would be in jeopardy. If that money is not used, not the entity that did not, you know, apply for it, just because we, you know, we reap benefit from it. But um, so those are the things that I'm looking at, uh, you know, I, I just, you know, I, I think it is something worth talking about. Without a doubt, I think we should as a council revisit this subject. I think there's a lot of, of, of things that, you know, there is some room hopefully for compromise. But you know, we did offer a compromise. We, as a city, we did say, hey, we're willing to do this right now, we'll cut your check for this right now. And it was told to us that check would basically barely cover the cause of design, you know, doing it, just the design of it, somebody drawing up. And uh, which is fine, I, I get that. Uh, but then, you know, there was the, the rest of the project that, you know, the Cap County said, we're just not willing to do that now. Now that you all are our city and that you should, you should have some input. And so we, we all agreed. Uh, in a uh, stated session to that amount. That we was willing to put in, put on the table and that was presented to the Cap County. And uh, I don't know what happened after that. Obviously, nothing came of it as, as Councilwoman, Councilwoman Cobble pointed out. But at this point in time, you know, maybe we can look at a, a different project. Along Panola Road where we ourselves would go after, um, you know, um, um. G-DID or state funding or even federal funding, uh, if, if it's, if it's available. Uh, and using in, you know, uh, along with our LMIG and uh, our splotch dollars and maybe we can get a uh. A project that is catered to Stonecrest as opposed to one that's catered initially for the Cap County. So you know, we, we don't have to say no to a project of that type, we can actually. You know, come up with our own project that is cheaper, better and, and something that we can resolve quicker. So you know, that's my two cents and you know, I just don't want it to be said that, you know, we, 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 we sort of just. Wasn't interested. I think we all were interested in that area and we still are, I am at least. And I don't, you know, it's part of the city of Stonecrest, so I'm certainly interest, interested.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rob Turner.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm all about collaboration and I think this is a good time and a wonderful thing that's happening with. The Cap County wanted to talk with us about this and I totally agree with Councilwoman Cobble in reference to. You know, we just can't throw our hands up and say, well, we tried this before, it didn't work, so let it go or whatever. I think we definitely need to sit down and see what we can work out, how we can compromise and work together to make this thing happen. Because it will benefit uh, the city and will benefit our co- constituents. And I also agree with you also, uh, Councilman, uh, Clanton, that you know, there's a lot of things going on. We did have some certain numbers in place in reference to uh, submitting those thing, numbers to the Cap County. And I don't really know what happened to that either. And you're right, it was smaller numbers. But I think by them willing to sit down and talk with us and working with G-DID also, that they're open to compromise, open to working with us and helping us and. Also coming maybe from a different vantage point. That was what, maybe a year or so ago, so a lot of things have changed and a lot of things could have happened since then. In reference to the last time we met in, in our executive session on this. So I'm excited about the opportunity we have because I don't want this thing to go away and I don't want this to jeopardize any future fundings. That we might have in, uh, coming to us uh, from the government or from the Cap County, whomever. So I think this is a great time for us to get together and I do want the council to be involved in this in reference to uh, the representation. Because uh, especially council, uh, ca- uh, districts uh, three and four, which if they're affected by this. But also all of us in reference to that because we have to vote on this, we are responsible and, and, and um. Committed to making this thing happen as a city and as a group. So I, I think we definitely have representation. Uh, from some form of leadership, but definitely the council should be involved and decisions and understanding and information is coming. We should all have all that coming to us and uh, then we can move forward and make quality decisions that's going to benefit all the citizens of this city.
Councilwoman Grimes, I want to hear from you that, so we can get a general consensus about going back to the table. Well, uh, to put my two cents in again, and that is that as uh. Councilman Rob Turner has just stated, things do change. And we need to consider the funds that uh, the city. Might be able to contribute as well as the funds that the state would contribute. And the funds that the county can contribute. And can we make this project work for a reasonable cost? And uh, to not go back to the table, I think would do our citizens, our constituents a disservice. So we need to go back to the table and see what is being offered and uh, bring it back to our community. Councilwoman Grimes? Oh, okay, we got to go ahead.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you very much. Um, with that, I think we hear general consensus to go back to the table. Without any commitments, but just go to the table. And hear what's being offered. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, the other item. I don't think we need to go into executive session four because it's been talked about enough in the open and that is that our internal auditor. I had decided to move on, although we had already stated that uh, he was suggesting that we get a full-time auditor anyway. And uh, we need to take some steps to make sure that we act on that now because we desperately need. Someone in place and uh, we have been, again, remiss. In making this happen. So what is your pleasure in terms of uh? Directing. Staff to initiate it, well, it should have already been initiated in RFP to make that happen. Uh, Ms. Scruggs, are you still on the line?
I am still online.
You know of any action? Okay, you update, this is where we stand with the. Getting the necessary paperwork together to get an internal auditor?
I have recently had a conversation with um, the deputy city manager and also Ms. Jackson in terms of. That position as well as some other positions and was wanting to. Bring that to council at the next work sess- session in April. If you all want to move on anything prior to that, um, I would have to expedite what I'm actually working on. But I did want to be able to bring some options in terms of what that would look like and how we could move forward with that um, pretty quickly. Okay, as you know, the previous um. Internal auditor was on contract through the city, so this would probably go in a very similar fashion. But in terms of marketing for that position and um, drafting up the actual RFP for that. Um, I would like to discuss that one in other words, in a work session, i- if that's okay.
Okay, then we'll make that happen. But we need to. Get on with it for a number of reasons.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Comments? Okay. Anything else to add for the good of the order?
Uh, Mr. Mayor Protem. I have a question in reference, maybe you can answer this in reference to reconstituting our committees. I know that the mayor had said after the retreat that he will be doing that and I didn't know whether he spoke with you about it or the status of that. One reason for that is that I, we, I, we really want to get this film commission in place and get it going. And we really need to move on that, we uh, at the uh, the crossroads of a resolution, we want to submit to the council for your knowledge and approval. But we can't move forward without, I guess, having that, those, those committees reconstituted or having the mayor given the uh, okay sign on that. Is that something we need to wait on or what's the status of that?
According to the charter, the. Committees should be reconstituted, well, they uh. They all expired the end of the year. So December thirty-one, they all expired and they have to be reconstituted. And the mayor is the one who initiates the reconstitution with the um, concurrence of city council. So we can make that request of the mayor again. To initiate the reconstitution of all committees, or there's some specific committees that simply cannot wait. Um, that we need to push for. Uh, we want to uh, start naming some of those this evening. You mentioned the film committee.
Film committee or commission, yes, that's one, I know, and I thought.
Finance committee.
Yes.
And the splotch committee.
You definitely have the list, you go on, you got it.
Um. I have a um. Overlay committee. We have the CID committee.
CID, yes.
Parks.
Parks committee. Who was that, was that Brandon?
Education that.
Now, those are, those are some critical committees that we really need to get uh, back in place. And uh, function into advise council. All will be an avenue for us to uh, go into some. Deep dive type discussions in committed meetings, we won't have to spend so much time in the work session. Or in the council meeting, uh, discussing these medical, we can flesh out our differences in the committee meetings. So I think, I think it's critical to the function of the city. So uh, if we could get a list and we'll get them to the mayor. And ask that uh, he initiate the reconstitution of those committees uh, ASAP. And we can ask that to be put on the next uh, agenda.
Uh, Mayor Protem, if, if I can, um, Councilman Rob Turner, I don't believe that um. You would need to wait for the film committee to present a resolution to the council, seeing that you're a council member. Um, I mean, you can. Obviously concur with whoever's creating the agenda that day um, to. Ask for the item to be added to the agenda since I think we're still on the one item only ordeal right now. Um, but you can present a resolution to the council as a council member, it doesn't. There's no requirement for it to come from the committee. I think what we are waiting on though. Is the budget amendment to be completed because even with the film commission. In place, if there's no budget, then they're really not in place, you know. So I think it's the budget that's holding up the resolution, not necessarily the other way around.
And it, and with that resolution, you're right, with the resolution though, it will be submitting a budget with it, so. I guess uh, we would have to wait for the uh, affirmation or the confirmation of the budget in order for that to be resolved?
Well, to your point, um, Councilman Rob Turner, this, I guess we'll go flip this back over to. Councilman George Turner and that we did decide in one of those meetings that we needed to go back and finish the. Budget amend, the twenty twenty-one um, budget amendment discussion. That it was really late that evening and we were all tired and we just kind of said we will go back. So we need to, and that maybe that's a special call meeting. Um, work session rather, maybe that's a special call work session to finish going through that, so we can get all of our recommendations out. We do, I think we are well aware that there's a set of recommendations from the mayor's office and then there's a separate set of recommendations from. Whatever the majority of the council votes on, so then we'll have to kind of see which recommendations pass. Um, but we did not finish going through them, um, so we need to do that. That, Rob, will help. Um, with the film commission because really, I mean, you can, we can do the resolution, I think, with no problem. Um, but the issue is going to be, the commission will have no money to operate.
Okay, well, I would like to get the uh, the resolution going, so if we could put that on the agenda and I'll, I'll make sure that uh, the attorney, the city attorney. Uh, Zoller's work, who's working with us will have the completed resolution for the uh, council to review, to go over.
Right, and I want to make sure that, that we understand there's a distinction between um, the money for the film committee.
Right.
And the money for the film commission. The film commission has a ninety thousand dollar budget request. The film committee had what, five?
Yeah, five, five thousand.
Yeah, so obviously, you know, commission cannot operate on the film committee budget.
Right, right, okay. We will get together too because we, we need to talk, me, Jasmine, you and uh, LaRona need to discuss some more of that, probably sometime this week. We'll talk about it.
Okay.
Okay, so what I he- heard they say is that we need to get the, get together a call meeting to talk about the paving list. And get that process moving. Um, and I just got a few texts from a few of you who said that Thursday was good, some that Thursday was bad and some said Wednesday won't work. So um, we need to continue to communicate along that line and come up with a date. Uh, either it's Friday or one day early next week to do a special call meeting. Now we're going to add more than just a paving list. Um, you can talk about the budget amendment because technically. Um, we had talked about making the budget. Uh, discussion, one hour of the work session. Until we got through it and it didn't happen on this particular uh, agenda. So we need to make that happen at the uh, the call meetings. And if you could text me. Your agenda item for committee, committees that you want to see re- uh, constituted? I can put together that list for the mayor. For consideration, hopefully by the next meeting.
Okay, and Mayor Protem, I remember us, when we were having discussion about our. Um, meeting schedule for this year, making the mu- next Monday. A Monday that we could use if we needed to. So might we consider using next Monday as the special call meeting? Um, if that would work for everyone.
Okay, any, any conflicts? I'm good.
I'm good for next Monday.
That's two. This is, Ms. Grant mentioned it, I count her. Clinton and Cobble.
Um, do we just need to make it fast? I'm just playing, I'm good, I'm good for Monday, for the fifteen.
Councilmember Clanton, is that a big problem for you?
I'm sorry about that, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, so it looks like next Monday will be a call meeting and uh, we'll get the information together and put it out.
Okay.
That worked. And uh, the agenda would be. Well, send me items for the agenda and I'll make sure it gets to the mayor. Uh, well, since we're calling it, we can do the agenda.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, anything else?
One, one other thing I wanted to bring up, uh, and I know the time is late, I wanted to ask Attorney Denmark. The status of what's going on with Metro Green, if there's something we can discuss here and not necessarily have to go into a executive session. We need an executive session on this one?
Um, we don't need one, um, uh, what I would report to you would be things that were happening in a public court hearing today, but. Um, we can go into executive session, but nothing I would say would be um, sensitive or strategy or anything that would. It would merely be an update, but it, it's at the pleasure of the council.
Let's hear it.
So we would need to make sure that we don't ask any questions that would take you down the road of strategy.
Right, and, and, and if I got, if I got a question like that, then I would just kind of point that out and then at that point, we could either. Bypass the question or we can elect at that point to go into executive session.
Okay.
Um, well, today there was a, a, a hearing uh, before Judge Barry and uh, the Cap Superior Court as it relates to. Uh, the Metro Green matter, the issue that was um, uh, was something of the hearing was. A motion to dismiss the city of Stonecrest complaint filed by the EPD and, and, and Director Dunn. Uh, they filed motions to dismiss before and the court has not really granted those. Um, the EPD is not really trying to argue this case on the merits. They're making procedural arguments uh, to get the case dismissed um, against them. Uh, they aren't trying to get the case dismissed against Metro Green, but their motion uh, wants uh, the court to dismiss. The lawsuit against EPD and Director Dunn. And the arguments were really technical reasons, uh, not because they argue, oh, we did right, uh, we didn't do anything wrong. That's not the nature of their arguments, the nature of their arguments are things like sovereign immunity and this kind of uh. Claim can't be brought against the director at his official capacity and just a lot of real. Uh, tiresome, technical, tedious arguments that just are far removed from the merits of the case. Which everybody's interested in getting to. That being said, we kind of beat those arguments back and at the end of the hearing. Uh, Judge Barry kind of went through her um, initial thoughts, even though she didn't rule or indicate. Uh, how she would rule, but she certainly told us what she thought and what she thought is that EPD ain't. And what she thought is that EPD ain't going nowhere. And so, so we felt good about the hearing based on the judge's comments. There's a citizen group, as many of you know, Chase. Many of our Stonecrest residents, some of them are not Stonecrest residents, but they have successfully intervened in the case. And obviously, we did not object or resist their, their intervention. They are our citizens. And if they elect to engage council and be a part of the litigation directly, then we certainly support that. So the citizens group Chase has filed a motion for a temporary restraining order, the same way the City of Stonecrest did, and they've made many of the same arguments. They've made some different arguments as well. That was not heard today and the judge is going to schedule a separate hearing so that she can consider the motion for temporary restraining order filed by Chase. Chase has also filed a motion to dismiss certain counterclaims filed by Metro Green. When Chase intervened in the lawsuit, Metro Green filed a, a, a counterclaim for defamation and a lot of other things against these citizens. And their lawyer rightly pointed out that there's a anti-slapp statute that they, they relied upon to get those counterclaims against those citizens dismissed. And that's anti-slapp statute is you can't use your resources to kind of stifle people's First Amendment rights and kind of drive up the cost of litigation. A lot of times big companies say, well, we will, we will paperwork them to death. We will outmoney them, we'll outlawry them because they're citizens and they don't have deep pockets like we have. So they file frivolous kind of lawsuits or counterclaims against citizens to kind of wear them out. And but, but, but in Georgia, you can't do that because if that's clear what you're doing, the lawsuits know we're going to dismiss those frivolous claims because citizens should have access to the courts and, and not be deterred because you have either a government or a big corporation that can file frivolous lawsuits or frivolous claims against these citizens and kind of, you know, outmoney them and, and wear them out. So, so Pace has filed this anti-slapp claim against Metro Green to have their counterclaims dismissed. That also was not heard today, even though I, I wish it, it had been. So Judge Barry says she's going to give us a new date to hear the, the, the temporary restraining order request from Chase as well as Chase's motion to have Metro Green's counterclaim thrown out of court. That's kind of where we are.
So Attorney Denmark, we got some emails, I guess, from some constituents that the city had filed a motion to dismiss Chase.
No, completely untrue. We, we, we have not done that and we would not do that. Metro Green filed a motion to dismiss Chase and the EPD filed a motion to dismiss Chase. But we, we, the city absolutely did not do that. We would not do that. You know, when, when they filed their motion to intervene, we didn't challenge or object to that. We just said, that's fine. I mean, we, from our perspective, we're on the same side with Chase. We're on the same side with the citizens. And so why, we, there's no interest in our part on trying to have them dismissed or to argue against them. Nothing we've done has ever been along those lines.
Okay. Well, thank you for clearing that up because that was, we got hit hard with that.
Well, I mean, the facts are funny things, man. And, you know, if you rely on them, you, you understand things. And if you don't, then, you know, you, you spread misinformation, but we have not done that nor will we do that.
Awesome.
Have we had the judge determine another in reference to the city versus Metro Green?
I'm sorry, Councilman, if you would repeat that.
Has the, the judge established another date for us, another court date?
No, sir. She, the judge indicated at the end of the hearing today that she understands that there are still outstanding motions and the judge is getting concerned that, you know, every time she thinks that we're getting to a point where we're ready to resolve this case and get kind of to the meat of things, there's a bunch more motions, motions, motions. Now, we are not, we as in the City of Stonecrest, we're not filing a bunch of motions. We're ready to get on to it. But, you know, EPD files a bunch of motions and Metro Green's filing motions and, and Chase is new. So they, they have to file their motion too because it's, they're new to the case. But so there's a proliferation of motions that all have to be heard and people have to get thirty days to respond to them. So it's dragging us out. It's dragging us out. And so the judge was frustrated by that today, but she has an obligation to hear all of these motions in due course. And so, but, but she did not give us a date today. I anticipate that she'll shoot an email with, with, with a, a hearing date in the next several days.
It sounds like there's some fight in your voice there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, we, we're going to win this case. I mean, there, there's really no doubt that we're going to win this case. We have to go long to win, but, but we're going to win this case.
I feel good. Thank you for all you're doing. Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. So anything else? Then before we go.
Thank you for that update, Attorney Denmark. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Then before we go, let us make note that tomorrow's a very important day. One, you vote in District Ninety for State Representative. And the other is three score and ten. I would have reached that milestone.
Oh, happy, happy early birthday.
There we go.
That's awesome. You look good. You look good, Mayor Protem.
Give me any day now.
With that, we say good night all. Thank you all for your attendance.
All right, birthday boy. See you later.
Good night, everybody.